All right, I'm going to call the meeting of the Charlton Water Selectment to order. Today is September 8th, 2020. It is 6:33 PM. And I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. For those tuning in, thank you for joining us. I will proceed by reading the agenda for this evening. Again, September 8th, it's 6:34 now. And this is the meeting of the Charlton Water Selectment. First order of business will be to approve the regular minutes of August 25th, 2020. Then we'll move on to community relations announcements and open forum. Following, following, we will have appointments and resignation. We have an appointment of a full-time patrolman, appointment of historical commission, appointment medium equipment operator, and a notice of retirement, please chief. Scheduled appointments at 6:45, we have a Wymer Dangerous Dog hearing, followed by new business, old business. Under old business, we have town council proposals. Then we'll talk about the special town meeting and close the warrant review draft special town meeting requests. Following that, we will have the vote of selectmen committee reports, which the Public Safety Building Capital Campaign Steering Committee will be providing a very brief update. Following that, we have the vote of selectmen policy review, town administrator report, other business unknown at the time of posting. Then we will have our next meeting announcements, which I will read right now. We have the Board of Selectmen and HINCOM, which will be meeting on Wednesday, September 16th, to finalize the special town meeting warrant articles. And the Board of Selectmen regular meeting will be September 22nd, 2020, at 6:30 PM. And tonight, we do have an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, VGG. If an opening, if open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and chair so declares, and to reconvene to open session for any other business if needed, and then to adjourn.
Are you taking my job?
Sorry. You'll have a chance to do that later. All right, so first order of business, do we have, anyone want to make a motion to approve minutes?
Chair, I can make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 25th.
Yeah, we have a motion, we have a second, a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye. Motion carries, it's unanimous, thank you. Next, we have community relations announcements and open forum. So the first thing I will do is read the announcements. So there's going to be a household hazardous waste and electronics collection day, Saturday, September 26th, 2020, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Casella Waste Services Facility, 165 Barefoot Road in Southbridge, Mass. Please be prepared to unload your vehicle. Masks or face covering must be worn. Proof of residency is required. Then the next and final announcement is from the U.S. Census Bureau. Census takers are now visiting households across the nation that have not yet responded. Understandably, some households that have already responded have expressed confusion over why they too are being visited. These visits are part of our efforts to be absolutely sure that we count everyone. If you get a visit and you've already responded, please be patient and kind and answer the census takers' questions. Please visit census.gov for more information. And that concludes our announcements for this evening. I will now go to open forum, where I know we have Sabrina Webb.
We have a big check, both figuratively and literally.
Sabrina, do you want to come on up? And we do need someone to take a photo, I believe, yes?
Yes. Mary, can you take a picture? Unless you want to be, be, actually, in the picture. No, no.
Sabrina, do you want to, if you want to sit just for a second, and then I'll come, I'll come over there in a minute. But just tell us a little bit about what you're doing. First, of course, welcome.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for having me this evening. So my name is Sabrina Webb, and I am the Charlton Water Reserve Office. And on behalf of the Reserve, it's my pleasure to present this check for $2,500 to the Public Safety Building Capital Campaign Committee towards their fundraising efforts. And as a resident in town, I'm very appreciative of everything that they have put forth. I know that it's a lot, doing nonprofit work is a lot. So thank you very much for that, and us luck in your efforts.
And I guess I'm the only one. Do you need anyone else to be good?
I am boundless if you want to come up.
No, I am fine, I'm not getting involved. And I am fortunate to serve as liaison on that particular committee, so on their behalf, because I don't think we have anyone here tonight. You don't see any committee members out there, do you, Andrew? Because I know we're, we're having a visit, so we're keeping people on. But thank you, please extend thank you. And of course, you'll be getting a formal thank you very soon.
Thank you guys, thank you very much.
And I shake your hand, but hey. Thank you, Sabrina.
Have a great evening.
You as well.
That's our excuse for like, for like, not killing each other, you just can't shake hands. Seriously, Sabrina, thanks again.
All right, and now, what I will do is, if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak, now would be the time. Mary, do we happen to know if anyone out there is here for general purposes?
Mary, I'm so sorry to advance on that.
Mary, I'm really glad you came tonight.
You need little signs to hold up.
I know, right? All right, thank you for checking, Mary, appreciate that. All right, I'm not missing anything, right? All right. So we're moving on, oh, we're doing it again. No, actually, we're good, we're running a schedule. So we're moving down to appointments and resignation. The first order of business is appointment, full-time patrolman. Andrew?
Attached is a letter from Police Chief Maxfield stating that they currently have an opening for a full-time patrolman due to Officer Michael McGrath's retirement. After posting the job as required and conducting interviews with the department's command staff, they have selected Anthony Francis Grivens to fill this vacant position. Mr. Grivens is currently employed by the Holden Police Department and has been there since May of 2003. Prior to working in Holden, he was a dispatcher with the Shrewsbury Police Department and was an intermittent police officer with the Ocam Police Department. Mr. Grivens is a graduate of the Massachusetts Basic Recruit Academy in Boylston and requires no FTO training. Chief Maxfield would recommend that Anthony Francis Grivens be appointed to the position of patrolman, and his start date would be contingent upon successful completion of the required physical and psychological exams and the required lateral transfer paperwork to civil service. I would agree with Chief Maxfield and recommend that the board make the appointment.
I would like to make the appointment as recommended by Chief Maxfield per the terms specified.
Definitely second for discussion.
We have first, a motion and a second, any discussion?
Only that, I'd love to hear from the chief and our, hopefully soon-to-be new officer.
He wants to be talked with a mask on.
Yes, please.
We've advertised this position almost a year. We haven't found the right candidate that would be a good fit for the hiring. Until Anthony walked through the door, he's motivated individually, has a great work record, highly educated, and we're excited to have him.
Is anything you'd like to say?
I just look forward to working here and appreciate the opportunities.
All right, well, I guess now we can make it, no, thank you, again, welcome. And I guess we can make it official. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome, I'm script.
Thank you.
May I approach you to give the standards?
Absolutely, thank you.
Be safe.
I was just hoping for me to ask more, just because they come all the way here just for that.
All right, thank you again. All right, so moving on to our second. Number two, historical commission appointment. Andrew?
Attached is a request from Michael Karen, Chairman of the Historical Commission, asking the board to appoint Susan Hall to the commission. Commission has been in need of members, and I'd suggest that the board made the appointment. The term of appointment would be until June 30th, 2023.
With thanks to Ms. Hall for volunteering, I'd like to make a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair both sides, any votes? Chair both sides, motion carries, it's unanimous. All right, moving on, we're to the medium equipment operator appointment. Andrew?
Three interviews were held for the position of medium equipment operator for the DPW by Superintendent Jerry Foskett, Highway Foreman Mark Oliver, and Human Resources Director Lynn Dye. They are recommending the board appoint Joseph Riaubel as the medium equipment operator. This position is a full-time, 40-hour position at the rate of $28.95 per hour, with a tentative start date of September 21st, 2020.
So.
Second. We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes, both chair both sides, motion carries, it's unanimous. All right, next, we have the notice of retirement, please chief.
Attached is a notice from Police Chief Graham Maxfield of his intention to retire from his position effective at the close of business on October 3rd, 2020, after serving the town of Charlton for past 23 years. I'd like to thank him for his service to the town, wish him well on his retirement. As the position of chief is no longer under civil service, the recruitment will be done under the personnel policies of the Human Resource Department. The current policy states for recruitment, individuals shall be recruited from a geographic area as wide as necessary to assure obtaining qualified candidates, allowing for preference to residents if all considerations are equal. The official notice of a job vacancy shall be posted to the town administrator's office on a public bulletin board within the town of Charlton Town Hall for not less than seven days and shall be published in a newspaper of local certification at least seven days prior to close of the period specified for submission of an application. Publishing requirements shall be waived if the position is to be filled by the promotion of a present employee. Under promotions, any town employee may apply for any position posted under 25.6 above. Consideration will be given to knowledge, skills, experience, education, and seniority.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
You've already rejected your resignation.
Got to tell you.
I don't know how to answer that, I got, I got trouble with that.
Angel, fire him, whatever.
It doesn't have to be braced with, well, I don't think so. And actually, if I may, chief, obviously, I can't speak for the entire board, but I think you know how I feel about you and the job you've done. To the public, if not here, I can, I can tell you with absolute certainty that it would take this entire stack of paper, if not more, to list Chief Maxfield's accomplishments as a chief of police for the town of Charlton. We've had good chiefs, time after time, no question. But I think we'd be hard-pressed to fill Chief Maxfield's shoes looking at the lengthy list of achievements he's done in such a short span of time. And you are going to be sorely missed, I believe, this, everyone in this building and everyone in this team. And I personally wish you all the best.
Absolutely. Chief, just to echo what David said, the reality is that you've been phenomenal, hands down. I mean, when we first met, I think it was a basic thing of just keep us out of the newspaper. And the reality was, you know, it was obviously tongue-in-cheek, but you've done so much for the community. And the reality is that anytime we've been in the paper, it's been for good things, between all the community service, the police programs that you've done. And the fact is, you keep us all safe at night with your team. You have cultivated a staff that is really the sign of a true leader, that at any time, again, people can call the police station, from the dispatchers to detectives, sergeants, lieutenant, regardless of what it is, they know it's going to be taken care of. And the fact that you allow people to sleep well at night, I think, maybe, at least as chief, your greatest accomplishment. So, you know, not to cause problems for your possible successor or successors in the future, but again, as David mentioned, you're leaving some huge, huge shoes to fill. But I'm proud to, A, have served with you, but I'm also proud to call you my friend, so you're going to be first.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
I won't give you a sensitive speech, so don't want to hear me.
Chief, I appreciate everything you've done for the town over the years. I was, I, if I got here five minutes earlier, I was going to look for a senior center menu to hand you, saying Thursday, I'd be low for $4. I could probably find one if you hang around later, but thanks again, you've done a great job.
And finally, I too want to thank you. I got to know you a little bit better when you were serving as interim TA and those ones for working with you. So thank you for your service to this community, and we wish you the best of luck in the future. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Just briefly, it's a good pleasure to serve this town and all of you. And I have great people in my building, and I have tenant, sergeants, you know, all top-of-the-line individuals, my executive assistant, Mar Jackson. So it's, although I speak for the department as a chief, you know, it's, it's really a collection of moving parts. And I have great people, and we have a great department, and you're in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
You still have another month for parties, I won't worry about that.
You should absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose.
We have to accept her.
With regret, I make a motion to accept the resignation, or slash retirement, to be a better way to put it.
Sorry, I can't say that.
I second those. I second the acceptance of your resignation.
Do we have a motion and a second? Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Well done, Max.
Motion carries, it's unanimous. Thank you again. Wish you all the best.
Madam Chair, just a quick thing. Knowing that, you know, the chief's last day is early October, and again, we can discuss now, later, however, because I, I don't, I don't want to fall too far behind.
Yep.
We should probably discuss how we want to handle the chief's successor. I have my own personal thoughts on it, but I didn't know what others, I can go first, or how, basically, however you'd like to handle, I would be happy to.
That's, you bring up a very good point, and I will defer to Andrew to let us know what we are required to do.
It's really at the discretion of the board how you want to handle it, as we put in the notice, you know, you, we require a seven-day posting if it was somebody outside, but, you know, somebody that's a successor you could just assign. My, my suggestion is you might want to take the next two, you know, the next two weeks to post the position to see if anybody, you know, if there's multiple internal candidates interested in the position, and then take action based off of what's submitted.
Madam Chair, so while we're giving opinions, so one of the reasons we moved to remove the chief position from civil service, and for first, but there were many reasons, one of them was this exact scenario. Should this scenario occur, we wouldn't have our hands tied, and we would have a succession plan in place. I believe we do have a succession plan in place. And I'd like to see us act on that tonight, which we have the authority to do. And again, that's one of the reasons we even set it up this way. That would also enable the chief's successor to have more than a week to actually work with the outgoing chief, so we have a smooth transition. So for me, I, I would rather have that discussion right now.
For the chair, I think that, because, like, I think we need to figure out who really wants it. I'm sure everybody has their ideas, and their head is a small town, but we probably should, even, and we don't have a meeting next week, right?
I'll be with the finance committee, I believe.
We're going to be joint meeting on the 16th, I mean, but I, we could take up the business.
So if it's only one week, I think we should get, we should get letters of interest internally, and then appoint and have the formal vote and be prepared. And I don't think the whole board would have the chance to look at resumes and backgrounds and everything else. We know, we know people personally, we all do, we live in this town, and our department is very active. But I think that if we, again, do it one week, parties interested internally, they send a letter, and then next week, we can vote based on what we get in our research and any questions we may have to be answered. Because just to kind of do it cold, by who we know and our friends and, you know, I just think to have that information, I don't know, to make a decision based on the information presented.
Okay, thank you.
It's, I realize we're out of civil service right now, but we still have a human resource policy intact, right?
We're working, we do not have an active human resource policy. We are technically in limbo, and we are following the guidelines still established by the planning board, by the first, the previous personnel board and their policies, which they would not have to have any action taken, or any delay, or any internal promotion. We actually have the authority to do that right now.
So just as long as we're acting within our authority, we don't, so this, this human resource document was printed, was made while we're in civil service.
So Andrew can probably answer that, but we used to work with the personnel board and the personnel board's bylaws. We've been moving away from that to HR and HR procedures. And Andrew can correct me if I'm wrong, but to this day, nothing's been codified. So we're kind of in limbo, nothing's been designated as an official policy. So we are still working off of the old bylaws as a guideline. And the old bylaws are still in line with the view of the town, admittedly, prior to the new board members. But at that time, it was, and the reason we took this step was to be able to do this, like I've mentioned, this evening. And I understand that the Charlton Water Selectment may not have the experience with the members of our department. Chief Maxfield is right, there's not a bad officer in that group.
I'm not, I'm sure.
However, the reality is, we have a succession plan, had a succession plan anyway. Someone who was ready to step into that role, who actually has already been the chief of this town for all the months, Chief Maxfield, was the acting TA. So I know that many of us have had intimate work with the people of that department for years, some not so long. But that being said, yeah, there are two parts to this. One is the appointment to a successor. And I will put this for you guys to consider, even if we wait a week. We, we, we wait a week to make this decision. All you're deciding at that point is to make an offer. Then you have to enter into negotiations and work out a contract. That could take another week, as we see in the past, that could take two weeks. And then you wind up having a new chief with zero time, sitting with an old chief to have a transition. Then it's just none, or a week or less. I think that has to be taken into account. Plus, the other part of this puzzle is if we did follow that plan, that succession plan that's been in place with the town in that department. Regardless, if we did move a lieutenant up, we now have to start getting ready to have an assessment center or a test that we decide upon for lieutenant promotion, because now we have to move somebody else. So there's more than one piece here. And I think also, the longer we postpone that, also put to delay and begin to evaluate assessment centers, beginning assessment center process. So other officers, whether patrolmen or whether sergeants, who want to apply for lieutenant's position if we were to follow that succession plan, would have time to study or prepare and even get that done in time to make that transition. So I think that with all of those things in mind, I personally think it proves the town to have this evening, and at least make a decision, because you still have to go through all those processes, and that is going to take time.
Okay, so, I'd like to, I'd like to.
We're just pointing an interim, right? So right now, we just need, we just need an interim that's going to hold us over until a decision is made, because we're going to, we're going to need resumes, we're going to need to do it the right way.
I'm going to stop all conversation right now, because we did not post, this is not on our agenda. And like we have said time and time again, if someone looked at this agenda right now, we didn't, it's not clear that we're going to be appointing anyone tonight. So because, solely because of that, I think they should wait till the next, to the 16th, sorry. 16th, or, I mean, you might correct me if I'm wrong, but we're on here, I mean, it doesn't say we're going to discuss that or do that, or.
I would, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt.
Okay.
I was going to say, let me be as direct as I possibly can. And the reality is that the police are a paramilitary organization, and I mean that in the best possible way. There's a chain of command. We have a lieutenant, Lieutenant Dan Dowd, who's been with the force 20-plus years. He's a legit war hero. For all intents and purposes, when Chief Maxfield is not available for whatever reason, ID, he was interim TA, the lieutenant has been helping run the department. When we think around morale, when we think around bringing people up in town, I can think of no better person than Lieutenant Dowd. And again, that's not taking away anything from the other officers. But there's, there's a line of succession, a line of command. And I would just make the argument that even if we don't appoint tonight, that we basically move forward with, with going into contract negotiations with, or basically offering Lieutenant Dowd the job. If he takes it, that's great. If he decides he'd rather do something else, that's okay too. But to at least start those, start those negotiations. The fact is that, I, again, again, just speaking myself as, as one of five, I don't see any reason why we would need to post, nor do we even need to wait to make that motion. But again, that's just me.
Madam Chair, in response to your point, I was just going to say, I, my personal belief is that we could do this, it's under appointments and resignations, and to me, this would be fitting under the nose of retirement to take these actions.
I think we need to be careful on that. I have, I have, I do not disagree with you at all, though, I just think that we need to follow a process, and we should, we can't, unless you reached out to him already, which would probably not be good, to see if he really wants it, we need to.
Well, then, that'd be good.
I mean, because you.
Okay, you know what, I don't like the direction this is going, so here's.
We can't just have our.
The determination is, we're going to have this on the agenda. If we have to have it in two days, if you want to have it sooner. But we should not be discussing this now. Some of us are privy to, and this is nothing to say that I'm against appointing.
I'm not.
And I don't even really know that, but this is premature. This is not what we all anticipated discussing and doing tonight, if so, it should have been on here.
You're right, it should have been on here. Agreed.
Yeah.
It should have been a little.
That was.
I'd stretch it to do, maybe consider an interim to fill, and then we can make it official. But until we're all on the same page with all the information, because we're all coming at this, I can see, we all have different information, and we should all have, be privy to the same information. So that's, yes.
If Lieutenant Dan, down here, I think, is here tonight? I'd like to ask him if he's even interested.
It's unfair to do that.
No, I, I will not have him come up, I know, you really pulled that, you know, that, but as chair, again, I just don't think it's appropriate.
So Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we direct town administrator Andrew Golis to reach out to Lieutenant Dan Dowd. A, ask him if he is interested in being interim chief. And if he is in being interim chief. Andrew, whatever the phrase is, to have him be appointed interim chief for the next week or two while we have.
Well, Matt is still here till October 30th, I don't know.
Right, but my feelings are, if it's going to be Lieutenant Dowd or anybody else, we want that person to have time with Chief Maxfield before he leaves, so they can do this new transition. Not, by the way, here's your first day on the job, and the old chief is gone, so good luck to you. So at minimum, I would like town administrator Andrew Golis to reach out to Lieutenant Dowd and inquire if he'd be willing to or interested in being interim chief for a week, until we can have this on our next agenda and discuss it more at length then.
Well, I was thinking of a discussion, but just for, through the board as a whole, what, what is our direction? For example, are we looking to promote internally? That's step one. Then two, is it, or are we going to open it up to everybody? What is, basically, what are we looking for? Because when we think around appointments and starting this, or are we going to discuss this in a week, which will then put things out potentially another week or two? And this thing could just keep going and going and going.
I do not believe that's the intent.
No, no, but yeah, I suppose, like, so, can't, so what, so what are the board's wishes? Because quite frankly, I would only be looking at somebody internally for this role.
Hold on one second, folks. We're about 15 minutes late for the hearing that we should have started. Would you be willing to pick up the table list till after we do the?
Yeah, it's time to measure.
They've been really patient, so you good with that, everyone? You don't have to vote.
Oh, that works for me.
All right, thank you. Hold that, we'll get right back to it. Thank you. All right, so Andrew, we are moving on to the Wymer Dangerous Dog hearing. Want to read memo, please?
Please find attached, nine complaints received on a dangerous dog owned by Richard Wymer, 45 10 Schoolhouse Road. Letter hand-delivered to the owner of the dog by the Charlton Police. Mr. Wymer called today and will be in attendance. Report from Animal Control Officer Hans Lue. Police report and Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157. Nuisance or Dangerous Dogs, Orders for Remedial Action, Appeal Violation of Order. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157, once complaint is received that a dog is a nuisance by a reason of vicious disposition or excessive barking or any other disturbance, the selectmen shall investigate or cause to be investigated such complaint, including the examination of an. including the examination of an, examination of an oath of the complaint and make, complain and make such order concerning the restraint or disposal of such dog as may be deemed necessary. It is that order that may, that the owner may then appeal to the district court. I have attached the public hearing guidelines for dog complaints for use during the hearings, which outlines the procedure for hearing.
All right, now. So my responsibility as chairman is to establish that we have quorum, and we do. And I need to call the, the public hearing to order, so I will. So this public hearing is called pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157, on the complaint of a dangerous dog by reason of vicious disposition owned by Richard Weimer, 45 number 10, Schoolhouse Road. And now, Mary, I know she's left. So just so everyone knows, everyone who will be speaking on this matter had to sign in. In my understanding, I know Mary has helped with that. Once they sign in, I have to swear them in. And I think Mary suggested that I can do it all.
Yeah, you're right. But, yeah, but they were, they were all able to come in at the same time.
Well, I think they can hear me. All right, so I need to get up and like go.
Yeah, they probably come up a little bit earlier. They got the door open.
All right, let's do this.
Yeah, Karen, we can't just tell you to work your internet connection.
I know. All right, so Mary, you confirmed everyone, everyone signed?
Not only a few people have, because they came in after, so they'll have to sign if they come up to speak.
All right, so now we have to do the oath. Get testimony in this matter. Okay, so everyone's got to give testimony, needs to rise and raise your right hand and repeat the following oath. So I must state your name. Do solemnly swear and affirm that the testimony I am about to give in this matter will be the truth. The whole truth and nothing but the truth. Acknowledging this oath under the pains and penalties of perjury. So help me God. Now I will ask that our animal control officer, inspector, to come forward and give a report. We tried to talk very long, so.
Good job, Karen.
Hi, Anne, would you like to just state your name and who you are and give us obviously position?
I'm Officer Andrew Charlton, Animal Control Officer.
You can, if you're comfortable, you may.
Oh, if you want to.
It's only if you want to.
Animal Control Officer, Inspector Charlton. I have been an animal, I'm an animal inspector for 34 years. Past 20, I have served this town, Charlton. And as animal control officer for 24 years, past 14, I serve Charlton. As we prove with my knowledge, did not see this incident occur. I write after the fact, I just think all of this is involved.
Anne, if you hold on once, can everyone hear? No, can we do anything to help? Okay, Anne, just speak a little louder if you want to turn, anything you can do. Thank you so much.
So at approximately 5:00 PM on August 18, 2020, I received a call about a graying white poodle on 10th Schoolhouse Road, and it had attacked a small puppy, and a young girl walking in. The rescue arrived within 15 minutes. Upon arrival, I saw Sergeant Adele and the EMTs were already there. The girls explained to me that this is how it happened, that's the way I understood them. We have three of them, all of them small dogs that have been walking down 10th Schoolhouse Road. Ten to twenty small dogs, so I'm almost certain that the dog, the poodle, described as a gray light. The young dog ran out from 4510 Schoolhouse Road and bit the puppy and one of the young girls. Then the puppy ran out and the poodle returned back to 4510 Schoolhouse Road. The owner of the poodle, dog is named Richard Weimer, the dog's name is Blue. The puppy, the puppy that was Bella and the girl bitten was Madeline. Donald Trinned. Madeline's mother's name is Kimberly. She said she owned the puppy. Her address was 4, is 4410 Schoolhouse Road in Charlton. I spoke to them to, and to understand what had happened, and I checked the puppy and advised them to see that they never cared for the injuries. Madeline had already been checked by the EMTs, her arm was wrapped, so I did not see her injuries. I wrote down the information and then went to Richard Weimer's house. I also asked him what had happened, and he said the dog rode aboard, railing on the deck, the baboose. And, and also the fence yard gate was left open. And the dog had boos. He said the dog had ran after the girls, he did not see the incident, because they had turned our small house purple. And he said the puppy ran into the road and a white chute struck the puppy and the person stopped. And they left, they left the puppy out when I moved the chief, he did not get the place or the name of the person driving. The action I took, I looked at the, the dogs, the dog for the quarantine, and I also rechecked it at 10-day quarantine. I looked at the deck and I saw the board that he showed me that had broke and advising to reinforce all of it with some heavy wire fencing to secure, and to secure the gate with a chain and a lock, so it doesn't get left open. His yard is chain-like fenced, and the gate was left open by his son. I asked him to do this as soon as possible and let me know so I could inspect it. Also, I advised him with the 10-day quarantine, the dog can be walked into the fence yard on a leash, finding adult home, no children could walk the dog. I also checked the paperwork on the way his vaccine had expired on 3/20/20. I also showed me a dog license for 2020 in Charlton. I issued him a 10-day quarantine notice and explained it to him. Dogs are quarantined at their owners' per Mass General Law, 3/30, Chapter 10-1. I also issued him a citation, 2532, have a raise vaccine up to date, along with the $25 fine for the dog running at large. I informed him that any and all expenses caused by the dog were to be paid by him, although this would be a civil matter in court. I asked him to call me as soon as the fence and the deck were secured in the gate. I left and got numerous calls from the parents of some of the children involved. Andrew Melby, Arnie Sanchez called the vet and explained to Mr. Melby and Mr. Sanchez what actions I had taken. They were upset that I did not take the dog away and tried to explain that this is not the way it's done. Dogs are quarantined at the owners' homes, and that they are personal property and have no right to take. Basically, that's, that's what I have.
Thank you, Anne.
I did have some, I did go through, look at some previous incidents, which I can tell you on those. On April 28, 2016, there was a call stating the dog that 4510 Schoolhouse Road were fighting in the house, and the people were on, etc. The police responded. I got a, I know, the dog, I noticed the next, well, within a few days, that a person visiting had tried to break up the dog fight and got bitten. His name was Tyler Christian. Therefore, I did a 10-day quarantine on the dog named Blue and the dog named Hayes, since they were, was not sure which dog bitten. On November 2nd, 2016, I recall, received a call from a man named Todd Lennon, who was walking in with his daughter and his dog Abby. And the dog named Blue ran out of the house, broke a cable, and bit the dog named Abby. She did quarantine on Blue, 10-day quarantine. Mr. Warner said Blue had been tied at the front when the cable broke. At that time, I asked Mr. Warner to put up a gate at the front door to ensure the dog does not get out and restrain, restrain him in the back area. Also, when in public, to muffle the dog's safety, he complied with those things. Since the last occurrence in 2016, to the best of my knowledge, and the police logs were searched, they're not handing you that the calls and the dog names until this incident. And I did include the reports for the police logs and the law on the quarantine and the previous quarantine.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep.
So, Anne, thank you. So just for my clarification, we're looking at basically over the past several years, three instances, correct, with this dog?
Yeah, but they hadn't been anything since 2016. The dog had been contained pretty well for all of these.
Any other questions, Ryan? You're gonna do, you'll, I'm sorry.
Do you have a recommendation for us on, on?
This is tough, you know, to, to really figure out what to do next. Possibly some training with a trainer with the dog or muzzle outside every time it's outside the doors of the home. He did comply with the fence, fencing the deck and chain, putting a chain lock on the fenced in yard.
Because you're the professional and, and we're just selectmen and we don't have 35 years of experience, we always look for you for guidance, so looking, assessing the whole situation, what do you think is the best, the best way to proceed with, with all the information you know about? Is this our, if, if we don't force him to get rid of the dog, is, are, are lives in danger, is the dog that aggressive? Or are these just such isolated instances, instances that another chance, chance should be given? Or just that's what I'm, I'm kind of looking for?
Well, I think that the, each instance, it was dog aggression. The fight in the house was between two dogs. And when somebody, you know, intervened, he got bitten. The second time was again, dog, dog fight. So it's the dog went after the dog. And in this instance, it was the dog, him going, the dog going after another dog, but feeling that the dog is dog aggressive.
How, how old do you think the dog is?
I think he's about six, five to six.
So in 2016, he would have been a year old, if he was a puppy.
You ready to hear from the complainant, or did you have any questions?
No, I, I'll, I'll look more for Anne potentially later, but I know, I'm good, yeah.
All right.
Thanks, Anne.
Am I supposed to sign this way?
Yes, thank you.
Anne, don't go too far.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the next, we'll hear the complainant testimony. Mary, can we do that in order? Who, who signed? Do, do we have that?
If you want to do, if you remember the doc.
The complainant's testimony. That's what, that's how it's listed here.
I know. Okay, so Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez.
And you, you signed in, right?
Yes, I did.
Awesome, welcome. And again, if you're comfortable, you may, right, refer if a party is not though.
Two or three times. So trust me, I'm very safe.
Okay.
So, thank you, Mary. Very nice to meet you all. Martin Sanchez, I've been arrested in the chariot room for about five years. Father of two teenagers today, and, and my wife, live in 36th Road. I'm also, for context sake, I'm also a professor at Clark University, and I'm a chief technologies and cybersecurity in your idea. So I have, I, I wrote a statement, I figured, you know, I, I wanted to deliver a message in two parts, if I may, so that I don't lose a bit of what happened here. But pretty much the latest incident that happened in August, in which my daughter and two other teenagers were involved, it couldn't be so much worse, right? There are two parts to my, to my message to you. First, could have, should never become synonymous of inaction. I am very, very upset about this whole situation. These dogs have terrorized our street enough. You've heard about only documented instances, but you have received already by now more instances of neighbors coming forward and others that I did not hear from the animal control officer about Mr. Lemon, which is an, an officer that lives down the street whose dog got attacked and severely injured. Maybe I missed that. So there has been many incidents where other pets, pets got severely hurt. Humans have had been hurt as well, both physically and emotionally. My 16-year-old daughter, she's petrified of walking her dog by herself down the street because of this incident. Being chased by two peoples is no joke. I'm a professional, semi-professional athlete. I run and do endurance races, and I run outdoor terrains, and I can guarantee you, when you're being chased by a dog, especially two peoples, it is something very, very scary. I remind you, we are dog owners, we are owners of three dogs ourselves, we're animal owners, and we understand the dynamics of having dogs. So nobody should ever feel frightened about walking down their streets, that's the bottom line. How many incidents need to happen before the town authorities do something about it? That's the bottom line. When I asked the animal control officer, how come nothing had been done if these dogs have been the past attack owners? She responded that they hadn't done anything in a long time. So I feel that the town authorities, or even, have failed us considering the lack of strict action taken today. So the concrete request that I'm advocating for is not a favor. I'm not asking to cut corners here. I am asking for an action that is pursued with the Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157. That's exactly what I'm asking. deem this dog dangerous, given their history of violence and multiple reports of attacks, and order measures accordingly. That's what I'm asking. I will hold the town responsible if anyone else gets chased or attacked by these dogs again. I am very upset, because I am having to spend time on my own, having to come here, because these dogs continue to do this. These are not chihuahuas, these are very large and very strong dogs. So you know this story, you have at least three documented reports of prior attacks. You have formal written complaints of multiple neighbors, at least six through your records by now. Its dogs are not a nuisance. This is not a nuisance anymore, this is not dogs barking and yapping away. They are dangerous, and migrate here, they're a public safety concern. I don't have to be a dog officer or a genius to figure that out. Do something about it, that is my request, do better than you have come to do now. That is the first and most important part of my message. And if I may, a quick second part of my message. This has to do with a call to reform how severe animal attacks are handled in the town. If there are animals that are repetitive offenders passed beyond humans, I feel that the town ought to examine and improve the processes in place. Let me be specific with three things that could make an immediate positive impact. Number one, documentation of issues in animals' attacks. Did you know, and quite frankly, I found this really frustrating, I had to request in written, they need for a report to be typed by the animal control officer, otherwise it would not be typed. That's what I was told. So I had to write a request in order for a report to be generated and wait 10 days for that report to be generated. So I know that other towns do it, and likely so should Charlton. Listen, when a police officer attends to a hall, it's my understanding that the respondent, responding officer has to go back and write a report. Why if the ACO is a member of the town police and reports directed to the chief of police directly is not held to the same standards, should be an automatic thing. The second recommendation is that in the event of vicious dog attacks, right? That the case is brought forward to the board's selectmen automatically. It is my understanding that the ACO is appointed by the board's selectmen. This is at least what I found on the website. And who else is more qualified than to assess the severity of a situation regarding animals and attacks? So I would expect the ACO to be more vigorous and proactive. Again, the fact that I'm standing here sitting in front of you makes me feel like I'm doing the ACO's job, to be honest with you. You have got to go to the selectmen if you want something to happen. This is what I received in response to, from the ACO when I confronted her of her inaction and lack of stringent handling of the matter. Third, if there are aggressive animals for which there is a record of, like in this case, why are they being allowed to be with expired vaccinations? I've gotten in the mail nasty grounds that we call in the industry about getting compliance with your dogs, or you're going to be fined, or these are the consequences. And yet, we have animals for which they have been reported to be aggressive with no vaccinations. So there is, you know, for sure, the opportunity for the town to revisit how the tracking and the tagging is being done. So, there is, you know, for sure, the opportunity for the town to revisit how the tracking and the tagging is being done of dangerous dogs, especially of non-aggressive dogs. In the specific of those dogs, by the way, it's two dogs. I chased my kid while she was petrified holding puppies, right, for not to be beaten. Two dogs. It was five months their vaccinations expires. We're not talking a week or two days. Five months that these animals were allowed to wander around with their expired vaccinations and the owners wouldn't pay. That is unacceptable. So, that was my two-part message. I appreciate your time and I look forward to your solution.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Welcome. You can, again, state your name and you make sure you're pleased that you had signed in.
I didn't sign in over there.
No.
No, here. Okay. Uh, my name's Christine Stibway. I live at 42, 10 Schoolhouse Road. And one time, okay. Three times, absolutely unacceptable. Absolutely unacceptable. We're being held hostage in our own yards. We can't walk our dogs in the street on a leash the way you're supposed to do it. Two times, too many. I don't want to see a dog hurt. That's not what I'm looking for. But I also don't want to see a child hurt. And that's what's coming next. The, the dogs are all over the neighborhood. They're kept on a 12-foot deck in the backyard. They jump over the 12-foot deck onto, I'm not sure if it's a bulkhead or shed, but they jump onto there and jump down. And that's how they get out.
But then at that point, is, is, is still a channeling fence? Is it secondary, am I under?
I'm not sure. I, I don't think so. And if it's open neglectfully, totally unacceptable. These are small children. We have a small dog that we walk once, sometimes two to three times a day. And we won't go that way anymore. We have to go the other way and hope for the best. And I just wanted to put that out there. One time, okay. Three times documented, not counting these situations that have not been documented, unacceptable. I'm asking you as the board to do something. It's not okay. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck to see all the court of cat in a couple weeks.
Keep going, Christine.
Sorry.
Hi, I'm Carol. My name's Shirley Malley. This is my daughter. I'm a dog trainer. She was one who was bit and her, our dog, his lung was attacked. We just bought two small Australian shovers for the beginning of June. We lost our last dog. She should be able to walk her dogs on the street without fear. The direction she goes by their house, there's a cul-de-sac that she walks around with the dogs and comes back home. This is a good walk for my daughter and the puppies. She can't do that anymore. She's petrified to go near their house. She's petrified of large dogs now. Our dog that was attacked, um, is now being seen numerous times during the week at the vet. She has a broken leg and punctures all over. The vet also stated that she was not hit by a car. There is no, um, damage to her that was displayed being hit by a car. Where her leg is broken is between the bite marks that were through her leg and it's a middle bone that's broken that would be displayed as being like from being bit. Um, it's also severely infected and that this was caused to us a fortune. And it's emotionally draining on my daughter, who is afraid to walk. Our other dog was still okay and got away.
My dog, maybe we try to walk the other direction all the time. And now she's petrified to walk. I have to try to bribe her something to get her to walk. Um, she's terrified of animals. She, whenever she hears bark, she just freezes up and we just stay there for a few seconds. I'm scared to go the other direction and I, I'm petrified. All dogs are behind me.
And she's a dog bar. Any big dog, she freaks out. The first week, every time she heard a dog bark, even her own dog's bark, she would break down crying. This isn't fair. And something needs to be done with those dogs. We live right across the street. We should not be in our yard afraid of their dogs being loose. So, again, like everybody else, we're asking that you make a decision. And also, I have four other children in my home. One I am fostering and my other three younger children, all ages five and a half, six and seven. So, if something were to happen to them because their dogs are loose, because they're allowed to keep them, I will hold the town accountable. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Just one, I have one question. Did the vet give you a report saying that, that it, anything that ride?
Was the vet report, um,
Saying that it wasn't?
That I have a copy of the X-ray.
It would have to be right after the X-ray.
I need it back.
No, I can.
We have an attorney for this. We're at least 2,000 in. There's a few pages to it. And I have them in the process for our attorney writing up the whole thing about how it was not a car. It was, which I can submit to as soon as I get that.
Yeah, that would need to be part of the record for this, so.
Yeah, it took a holiday. I need to get back to the hospital.
You can scan a copy.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's. If anybody else wants to see this, it does just say. We just got a copy. We can't come over.
Thank you. We're still on complaints. Any other complainants?
Would you mind if I was, um?
You are?
How is Dexter's life with the, with what happened?
Can't wait to come up.
If you just sign.
You got, yeah, please sign your name.
Hello. Sorry, I'm really shaky right now.
Relax.
We don't bite.
We're all friends.
He's funny looking.
Yeah, that was terrible.
I know. That's what I said.
So, my name, Coral, per se, the dogs are. I've been in the neighborhood since sixth grade. I was, I'd drive by every day on the bus. The fence has never been secured. It was really hard for me. I mean, Maddie's one of my friends. I've known her for a while now. And we've been taking our dogs every single day. And this was really unfortunate that this happened. But just the pain. The dog cranked down, was like, was thrashing it. It was like a rag doll. It really was. And it was screaming, screaming. So, just knowing that the pain it must have gone through and then even afterwards, like to have run home on a broken leg. And Maddie, it's really unfortunate she got bit, but so much, you hear so much on the news and so much could have gone wrong. Even walking, I, I'd go pick her up still and I'd go walk over there and get her. And it's just really hard to go by their house. Do the like, just hearing the dogs and they're always out. Not, not the dogs, like they're out. I hear them making comments with them. But, um,
I'm sorry, what was that? What did you just say?
They're just make, I hear them making comments over there, even while they're, they were talking. I know they're not happy, but that's frightening as well. Just going by. I don't want anything to ever happen to my dogs. And it was terrifying when the dog first lunged at my puppy and I and jumped up to try to get him. Like, having multiple dogs, I have nothing with the dogs, but now I'm, I'm just, I don't want to be near any big dogs at all, really. It freaks me out. Like, I think that they might just turn and like snap. And I don't want my dogs near any other dogs because of it. It just really makes me anxious now. And I, I just really want something to be done about it. If you guys could do that, that would mean a lot to us. I know it means a lot to Maddie as well. We can feel safe walking our dogs again, especially down the road and wouldn't have to avoid the road itself. That's all.
Thank you. On behalf of all, all of us, thank you for that. I know it's not easy. So, you did great and thank you. Okay. Any other complainants? So, Mr. Mr. Wymer?
Sir, Anne, Anne, please forgive me. Is it Wymer Weaver? I want to make sure that I'm saying.
Wymer.
Thank you for joining us.
Okay, so, we have had a few situations. These, they're talking about multiple situations. Every other situation was something in my house where my, my two dogs went at each other, never running the street. I have neighbors that if my dogs were running the street, Anne would have a call. My dogs are too much and gets a call. I've had a neighbor that's called 15 times in a year just for my barking dogs if they go outside for too long. So, for them to say there's incidences that were never recorded is false. Number one. Number two, you know, these people are in here telling me about how they're feared for their life and as they're walking by snickering at my house every day. And I have it on video and pictures of this. But they're in fear of their life, okay? Just this morning, Madeline throwing dog poop in my front yard across the street.
I, I, I'd calm down a little bit.
Yeah.
I really would.
So, it's just, it's, it's, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
They're, they're sitting there saying, oh, we're in fear of our life or this or that. If I'm told to do something with these animals, I do it. I look out for my dogs. You know, it, it was a freak thing. I will say I do have the video of all of them antagonizing the dog on my property. But nobody said that they stopped and let their dog go to the bathroom in my apartment before he broke structure. So, I mean, there is other evidence that just was not brought up.
Any questions?
Where is that evidence? Does Anne have it?
Already.
Actually, I, I don't know if I even, if that's your, fair question, I think.
Right down to the jeep that ran the dog over, I have. You know what I mean? So, there, there's a lot more to it.
But, but to say there were two incidents, that, that most of the incidents happened inside the house, two were documented and they're very serious.
So, what, let me go back through what happened. So, on the one where they're talking about the neighbor down the street and the dog, my dog was actually on a leash at that point and he, and the clip had broken on the end of the leash. He wasn't tied to the fence. He wasn't tied. The clip just had broken off the end and that's how he went as we were putting him in the house.
And this is the one in 2016?
Yes. Um, the one where Tyler Christian doesn't know what dog bit him. So, technically, there is only one. And this would be the second on blue because he's not sure what dog actually might have bit him. But the two dogs were fighting over a ball they're playing with, tried to break it up, he got bit.
You agree?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Wymer, we have a letter from, um, Mr. Todd Lemon saying that there was another incident regarding a dog was attacked. His female, what would I call it?
That's the incident I'm talking about.
Okay, that's the one.
That is in the police log. He's just, that's, I didn't, I don't know the name. I don't.
Oh, no, that's okay.
The cop down the street.
So, just speaking for myself.
That's when the dog wasn't tied to the porch. It was on a leash, but the, the clip on the end of the leash broke when we're going to bring him back in the house and he ran off.
You can understand that neighbors and our concern.
I, I, I do. And I'm not saying I don't. I, I just, if, if you guys can plead a case, tell them the truth about the case. Don't, don't come in saying, oh, well, we're scared of our life, but you're walking by 37 times a day, throwing stuff in my yard, this, that and the other thing. But I can't walk that way. And I mean, at this point, I'm not even letting my dogs really out besides the bathroom and they go back.
Generally, when it comes to dog hearings, that I'll, just having had my share, they're one of the most uncomfortable and miserable experiences. Remember the Board of Slaughter Committee. My concern with this, though, is that it's gone from, mistakes happen. I get that. We all make them. God knows I have. My concern is that I'm sensing a pattern in that there's a lack of control of the dogs for whatever reason, whether it's gates are open, clips are breaking. And when the dogs get into that aggressive mode, we've now crossed the line in that it bit a child. And looking at what the pictures I've seen, it appears that it wasn't a deliberate bite of the child, but regardless, the child was bitten. That now crosses a completely different line with me. If it's a dog-on-dog thing, look, it's, it's not right. Things can get handled the, the right way. So, let me ask you, let me look at turn the tables from a certain empathy perspective. What would you recommend? What, what are you volunteering or suggesting to do so that literally we, and I mean this absolutely nicely, that we never have to hear about this again?
So, here is where my, you know, on the, on the chapter 145, 157 law states as a nuisance dog. I don't think he's a dangerous dog, as in going after people and he just gets out and he's been by humans and this and that. I don't find him as that. Maybe a nuisance because everybody's calling or whatnot, okay. But, you know, I can guarantee he'll be contained. I guarantee all the fences are now locked up and padlocked with chains around them. And the deck has been re, redone. So, there is no chance he's getting back out. And now when my dogs go out, they're only out for about five minutes as one of me or my wife sitting there watching them. We are watching them at all time as they go out and then bring them back in.
Let me ask you this, just again, just, we just have, just having a conversation. Why wasn't this done before?
What happened was there was, there was stuff up, but it actually bit through the wood, wood rods. Now, now I did it through steel. So, it's all steel fencing out where it was wood, right? The gate thing, um, I had a lock on it. It's got a lock on the, you know, the hooks go down into the bar and then you got to lock through the bar. I eliminated that now because if it was pushed on, it would open. So, now I actually have a chain with a lock that goes around it. So, even if you push on the gate, cannot be opened now.
Can the dogs go over?
No.
At all?
No. Um, I actually just had somebody a little while back, up, upright fence, go through and redo the whole fence all the way around the yard. And they put angled corners in so that he can't climb up.
What I'm struggling with, quite honestly, because it's always better to be camped, is one way or another, the dog's saying, declare something tonight, whether it's nuisance or dangerous. And I don't know if the, if the conditions will actually be that different at the end of the day. I mean, some of the things that, again, I'm just throwing out to the board, like Anne's idea, quite honestly, if it didn't bite a child, I'd be a little more lenient. But the moment it bit a child, again, that'll be redundant, but that's where I cross the line. That anytime it's outside, quite frankly, it would need to be muscled. That would, I mean, and that includes on your deck. Anytime that you were outside of your actual premises, it would have to be on that. And quite honestly, again, just I'm one of five. So, it could be a very different conversation. Um, that if there was any, and I'm just being honest with you on this. If there was any change of the dog escaping, getting out of the yard, being off-leash for all intents and purposes outside of your fenced-in area for any reason, I would actually ask that as part of the conditions that you surrender the dogs. Because it's.
Surrender what?
Oh, that, 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 that Mr. Wymer would actually surrender the dogs.
Why would I surrender to when we're having problems with one?
Well, the one at least. That, well, again, it would, it would obviously depend upon the situation. What I think I'm concerned around is patterns of, of, of aggressive dog behavior. And to your point, when, when, when the dogs, I believe during the first incident where Mr. Tyler, I believe the, the name was,
Yeah.
may, may, may have gotten bit. He wasn't sure by which one.
Right.
So, that tells me that if, if, if he's not sure, you may not be sure. So, either dog could actually have that predisposition. So, either dog could actually have that predisposition. So, I, for myself, am erring on the side of caution, because I don't wanna have any neighbors, first, to have to worry about walking by anyone's yard. Much like you shouldn't have to worry about walking by theirs with your dogs on, on a leash and, and a muzzle. It would be the same exact conversation, quite honestly. So, again, I'm not sure where I'm going specifically on nuisance versus dangerous, but I will tell you, I'm a lot less lenient on this. And I'm not looking to put the dog down, so I will, I'm just being honest with, with, like, people in the audience and yourself, I'm not looking to put the dog down. I think there, with training, muzzles, as well as additional, quite honestly, one might even call draconian conditions to make sure that the dog is safe, you're safe. And quite honestly, as long as the children in the neighborhood are safe, I think we can probably reach, at least myself, an agreement. But the moment any of, any of my conditions would be broken, it's gonna be a much different conversation, and that's not a threat in any way. I, 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 I'm, I'm just trying to be completely candid with you.
I agree with that. I'm not saying that, that, you know, yeah, it's went far at this point, but, you know, I have been good with not, not with them up not getting out anymore. You know? I haven't had calls, nobody's been called, you know? And Anne, to me, the person that tell you that, you know, I was seeing her once a week at one point, because my neighbors called because my dogs were barking all the time. And right away, I fixed the, the problem. So, you know, I try to do everything that I'm told to do with my dogs.
Mike, David?
I, I've got several questions, and I'm hoping that I can get the answers from the appropriate parties. One would be, I think this might be for Anne, if I, if I may, Mr. Lemon's email complaint. Is that in the three, or is that not?
Yeah, it's in there, right?
That's one, that's one of the three?
Yeah, I read that, um, Claude Lemon was walking his daughter with his daughter.
Okay, so we have the three incidents.
And while David, if you just don't mind, I want clarity on one thing for all of us. You've heard all the testimony tonight, Anne, you started, obviously, to the best of your knowledge, would you say everyone has reported accurately, or did you hear any discrepancy or inconsistencies?
I hear, I'm hearing that the dog's loose all the time, but nobody's called the police and called me on them. I have had none since sixteen until this last incident, so they were getting loose all the time, and why wasn't anybody calling in?
I think that's what I wanted to, I wanted to know, because you listen to everything, so thank you for clarifying, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Child and police department is logged on the logs, we went to all the logs.
Thank you, David.
So, yeah, and part of this, I think, is, and where I do agree with Mrs. Sanchez, is there's two issues here. One is the, the issue with the dog and the dog biting, and the other one is internal, as far as the town's concerned. And I guess I could say an apology and embarrassment to Mrs. Sanchez and, and the other people here. We can't depose people who are no longer here, so we can't talk to former chiefs, former town administrators, we can't interview them. So, I'm embarrassed, and my apologies if we can't do that. I don't think there should ever be an instance in this town when a dog bites a person, or bites a dog, that this board isn't at least made aware. We don't do the enforcement, that's Anne's job, but this board should be made aware, and I am concerned. And again, it's not Anne's job, you do your job, it's, it's the chief's job and the town administrator's job to notify us of this. So, I think part of what we have to do going forward, and I would request this board at another meeting, post and have a discussion around process. Because we should never not know. I think that's a problem. Where I disagree with Mr. Barowski is the line being crossed. I think the line was crossed in that a dog was bit, and then we timed the dog was bit the second time, then the child was bit. The problem, one thing that Mr. Barowski and I share is the unfortunate displeasure of having to have, have sat on multiple dog hearings. They all suck. That's the bottom line, there's no winner. So, as a dog owner, and we, we rescue dogs, what we've always learned, because we always hire a trainer to bring in dogs. What we've learned from the trainer is, you're not really training the dog so much as you're training the owner. But something else we learned is, the importance, and most people don't realize, that they should always hire a trainer to go with them to choose the dog they get. Because not every dog is appropriate for every family in every neighborhood. Dogs have different aggressions, it can be a food aggression, it can be dog aggression, it can be people aggression. Where I agree with Mr. Barowski and my concern is not a question of how many years have gone between incidents, but simply the virtue of the fact that there have been so many incidents. And to me, and I'm, I'm not Anne, and I'm not the trainer, but having been through this again sadly too many times, and having been through the adoption and training process, and what I've been taught by trainers about dogs and adoption and training dogs. Is that if a dog has an aggression like this, and it's not being addressed, the dog, and it's not to say you don't love your dog, you probably love the dog to death regardless of its aggression. You know, it may be a food aggression, like I said, or a dog aggression, but that aggression may make that dog not the right dog for you. Doesn't mean you love it any less, it's just a reality. Also, there was a comment made about, I think it was Bill, I don't think we would have the legal right, you can make me tell him I'm wrong. I don't think we have the legal right to have part of the terms be that he would have to surrender that dog if it happened again. I think you would have to declare the dog a danger, work with Anne, and there's a process, I don't think he could just say, I agree to surrender my dog. But we can, we could, we could look into that. I, I will tell you that right now, it's like Bill, I'm torn. I lean more toward declaring the dog a dangerous dog. That, that's where I'm leaning, because this is not a one-time incident, it's not a two-time incident, this is a third time. How many dogs or people, how many times does a dog have to bite before something is done? And I think the only thing I could even consider to stop my desire to declare this dog a dangerous dog would be to Bill's point. If that dog ever leaves the house, it has to have a muzzle, because if it does get out, at least that way, it can't bite someone. I know their fear. I walk my two rescues, my children walk my rescues, my wife does. We go down the street, this dog tied out. That dog sees my dogs, it chokes up, and it bolts, and it, it gets full, but still, then my dog go like that, and we can't, we're gonna walk our dogs down the street. So, it doesn't mean they don't love their dog any less either, right? But the reality is, you should be able to have your dog, love your dog. They should be able to have their dogs and love their dogs and walk their streets without worry. And I'm in the uncomfortable position right now of saying, for me, it's either the dog is on a muzzle, if it's not in that house, or to declare the dog a dangerous dog. And I hate doing that, because to me, again, it's still, it's never the dog's fault. It's, it's always, you know, either the owner or the dog's not in the right place. And this may be simply the dog's not in the right place. If the dog has aggression, it may need to be with, in a certain environment where that aggression can be handled so that other dogs will don't get hurt, whatever, that risk is removed. I'm just, that's, that's, I think, I think I've addressed all of my notes. And I, and I would ask your permission if I remember wanting to come back, but I think that's it.
I will just go over to see Patsy, Steve, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I, I, I agree with Bill, I think that if we could do a, this is the last time, and next time, it's kind of, you know, with, these are all the rules, and next time it happens, there'll be a hearing, and and the dog will be declared dangerous, and we go from there, I don't even know what that process is after that. But I do agree with.
Let me just let Steve comment, because.
I, I did hear, I did hear Anne, and thanks for the report, I did hear you say you fight with aggressive animals. And, and. You're right, right. And from, and just, and I, I got you, from Mr. Sanchez, the, the reason it probably took ten days for her to get the report is she had, she was waiting until she, she could go back and clarify that he did the, he did the, the game.
Only was quarantined ten days.
Yeah, but that's not, really, that's the way it's always been.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I don't think that was really, just saying, just so you know.
And I don't feel required on every single, and I do write, be writing a book every day.
Three times, three times is, is, is very, very disturbing to me. And what I fear is if that, if that girl was walking, if the younger one was walking down the street with her dog by herself, you know.
They were. There was no dogs?
Can I speak?
No, but there were two girls, right? But if she was alone.
She, the, um, Hallie, and there was one other boy with them, all, she's twelve and a half, sixteen.
My biggest issue is when you read in the chapter one forty, uh, one fifty-seven, right? It states right there that any taunting, um, aggravation to the dog near the dog's property, it breaks structure, that is now on the people that tease that dog. I don't know if you read that in part three. We do have the video of them sitting there at the end of the driveway, well, their little white dog goes into our property's bathroom. And they're letting their dog just sit there and antagonize and antagonize this dog till finally they walk away.
Mr. Wymer, I'm having a hard time with that defense, quite honestly. I, I agree with you that if there's taunting, et cetera, meaning, God forbid, someone throwing a rock at your dog. I would not fault your dogs for biting that person, I honestly would not. But to have a young tween, probably, I'm not sure. It's just, right, but to, to, to think that a, that a, that a young group of children walking their dog on a rural street is the equivalent of taunting, that would justify a dog breaking loose and biting? I, I, I'm not buying that defense.
Taunting, taunting, in my, what I had seen, when I remember the video, I watched the video, is actually them, my neighbors is walking, right? Get to the end of my driveway, and every one of them just stop there for a minute, and stop, and just sit there, and sit there, and then let the other one go in the bushes, and then proceed.
But is that, I mean, but really, is that taunting? I mean, there.
Let's not, with, with getting into.
Well, I know, I mean, I think it's important. If that's a defense, I mean, I just wanna talk through it.
Can we just say something to that? Do you have issues with them in the past already, we're in the public court thing, with something else that had happened years ago?
Madam Chair, I reckon, we can't go down that path.
Do you have a fear of them?
Okay, wait, no. Don't make me use this, I never had yet, please, no. But thank you, honestly. All right, David, last, last, last time, please. Let's wrap it up. In one second, thank you. No, I, I see you.
I'm just gonna go back to, again, separate issues, and I will point out that, to your point, to our, don't make a right. Even if that is the case, and I'm not gonna say it is or isn't, that still, to me, is a separate issue from three instances of a dog biting. And I think they need to be treated separately, and, and if that's a separate issue, then that needs to be dealt with separately. What I really wanted to say, and, and I understand where it's like, and relax going with it, but where I think I differ is, to me, it's not about if there's another time. I think that our responsibility here is to take appropriate action to ensure that there isn't another time. So, I don't wanna sit here and have a conversation around, let's do this, and then if it happens again, another dog or another child, another person gets bit, then we'll do this. I think we need to take appropriate action this evening to ensure there is no other incident. Now, if we can find an appropriate action that protects his ability to, to keep his dog, love his dog, raise his dog, that keeps them safe. And I'm comfortable myself knowing that as long as that is followed, like the muzzle, because anything that gets out, it's not gonna bite, it can't bite. Then I think that would be the, the, the primary goal. Short of being able to find a solution that's going to allow him to keep his dog under conditions like that, so that dog cannot hurt somebody else, then I think there's only one decision. So, we have to decide, what's the appropriate course of action, nuisance or danger, to ensure that there is not another time, that we're not gonna sit here again with this group of people discussing these same dogs.
So, you may, did you sign in? Did you sign?
I did.
You did, okay, then if you could state your name and address.
Stephanie, like, forty-five cents, Los Angeles.
Okay. Welcome.
Do you want to sign now or after?
Before, please, and just, if you're gonna get close, can you put your mask on?
I'll put my mask on. No, I'll put my mask on, it's fine. So, um, I just wanted to let you know that I seen what happened. Um, I'm not, I don't have a speech, I didn't write a speech, I'm not here to put anybody down. My dog did not bite a little girl. I, I seen what happened. He didn't bite the little girl, he gave her a boost, um, she was holding the dog on the leash. The dog pulled her, her dog pulled her, and her dog must have been spooked. So, obviously, my dog was, it shouldn't have happened, and I'm, I'm gonna agree with that, it should not have happened. I apologize to them, um, I've got nothing against them, I don't know who they are, I know obviously who, who people are willing to explore for me. Um, and their dog was friends with my daughter, she's been in my home around my dog, she knows my dog's not mean. But the point is, I seen what happened, and my thing is, is I don't, I have proof, I mean, you guys don't wanna see, that's fine, but I don't understand, if somebody is in fear of their life, why are you still walking by this home when the dog attacked you? I don't understand that.
Because it's their right.
It is their right, it's a public street, you're absolutely right, but you have children. If, if I was with my children, or even if I wasn't with my children, and I walked by somebody's home, and their dog got loose, they attacked my children, I'm not gonna walk back by that home. I'm gonna go totally different, I'm gonna go a totally opposite way. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be honest with you, like, to sit here and fabricate the story, I'm not asking you guys to take sides, it's not what you do. I just don't.
We don't wanna accuse people of fabricating stories on either side.
I, I mean, it's your decision, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna make the right decision. If I felt that my dog was a dangerous dog, I would have gave him up a long time ago, I would have surrendered him to, I would have, you know, called me in myself. I don't feel that he's a dangerous dog, he's not a dangerous dog, sure you have that loose, no, absolutely not. Does he jump off the deck on the shed? Absolutely not, he's not out there long enough. He was out there that day, like, we just got home, so I should have got him in the house quicker, and that's my fault. I didn't get him in the house quick enough, that's my fault, but this is the dog we're talking about, like, it's, it's not right, it's not right, I have nothing, like I said, I have nothing against the people, I don't know them, so I, I just, I think that, that, that to come here and to try to, you know, say things that didn't happen, happen, that's not right, like, it's just, it's not right. The dog didn't attack a child, like, you keep saying child, he didn't attack no child, there wasn't a child that was bit.
EMS was unseen.
EMS wasn't, no, it wasn't.
There's a wound on, on, and again, I, you can't figure it, Miss Wymer, like, it's, there, there's literally a wound on her arm that was reported, that was caused.
Her dog dragged her, that she would have a wound from her dog dragging her? That wouldn't happen? Like, her dog pulled her, her dog ganked her, aren't we here to talk? It's clear that this is just back to judging the pit bulls, and it's not, it's, and I'm not saying you guys, I'm not saying you. And like I said, your decision, I can only hope that you make the best decision, and if you, whatever you do is your decision. I just don't, he's my pet, like, I, if he was dangerous, I wouldn't have him. I wouldn't have a, why would I have a dangerous dog in my home, I wouldn't, I wouldn't. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a dangerous dog in my home.
One.
So, just to your point, I don't judge pit bulls, one of mine is a pit mix, and she's the most loving dog in the world. But to Mr. Cronus's comment, I think he was right in my opinion. You know, if, if I walked down the street and I said I'm afraid of my life, it might maybe embellish me a little bit, make, but the fact that I might have still been scared is, is still accurate. And Mr. Cronus was absolutely correct in that it doesn't matter, it's a public leg. If they walk their dog one way, and if you walk your dog one way, and a dog comes out over that fence, you should not be the one who says, I can't walk that street anymore. That, that's completely wrong. You should be able to walk freely on any street you want.
You're absolutely right, you're absolutely right.
So, I agree with Mr. Cronus on that, they shouldn't have to walk the other way, they should be comfortable.
You're absolutely right, I agree with you, I agree with you one hundred percent, you're absolutely right, but if you're in fear of your life, you're gonna walk back by the house of the dog, your children? You're gonna let your children walk back by the house where the dog supposedly attacked them? Why would you let your kid walk back by the house?
One common reference, because this is important for context. If you look at a map, a graphic map, you realize that relative to where we live, the safest route to walk is toward their house, because the opposite way is Route twenty. We live in Sansom Road that becomes Hill Road. So, they are right, excuse me, and I'm gonna walk fifty times a day on my kids, that is the safest route rather than going towards Route twenty. That is the reason why, we have to excuse that, because, you know, it is our right to walk, you know, being frightened, as many. as many times as we run down the, that street.
I can tell you that at least, I know that several of us did, both the neighborhood. Do we ride by?
We have a, just a quick question to end.
Uh, for you, and so, and you may or may not know the answer to this, I don't. So, the difference between declaring the dog a danger and declaring the dog a nuisance? We declare the dog a danger, the dog is put down, correct?
We have-
I don't think so.
Mr. Move from town? Nope. So what's the option of declaring the dog a danger?
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, there's seven different things that can be done if the dog is considered a danger. This is a national law, they're very straightforward.
So I'm going to read something, just, just briefly, just, I'm going a little ahead of myself, because we didn't close the hearing yet. But just so you know, what we're going to be looking for and what our options are. We can craft a decision tonight, or we can take the matter on the advisement and vote to continue the hearing to another date and time. The board may make a decision based on the following options: disposal of the dog, which basically would be euthanizing the animal within ten days; removal of the dog from the town within ten days; continued restraint of the dog at the owner's expense as outlined in the board's order, or take no steps as a result of the hearing. Just, I know, we don't, we deal with this, we, we don't have this memorized, so I just hope that helps my hears as we move forward. Now, did you have the question, Miss?
No, I make a motion.
All right. No, I didn't say anything yet, and I'd like to make a comment. First of all, again, thank everyone for being here, and I know this isn't easy, and this isn't easy for us, as we've all stated. I too am a dog owner, I, I too was bitten as a child, so I can relate, trust me. What I don't like, I don't like excuses, you know, when I hear a clip is broken, when I hear a dog has chewed through wood, that's not the dog's fault, that, that's us, the owner should be looking at our, our surroundings for our dog and make sure everything's maintained because of things that can happen. So please, you know, one, and one of the things that, I, I think it was Bill, or maybe David, or maybe both of you had said, is, you know, uh, and, and maybe, you know, I believe in training, and it's more about training the person, yeah, but ultimately, if you're open to, to training with your, with your animal, um, I am all for the muzzle, I think that's extremely important. And, and the other things you've done, I saw the pictures that you did to secure fence. But, uh, let me be clear too, in my opinion, eh, people should be allowed to walk by your home without being fearful. You know, we have that, it, it's like, it just makes sense, right? So, that's where I'm coming from, that's why I keep my comments very brief. Uh, but now, I, any other comments, but so what we can do next, if we don't have any other questions, we close the testimony? Right? All right. So, I will now close the testimony and all questions?
There isn't, and then you can ask us the difference between nuisance and danger.
Okay, well, okay, before we do that, then.
We can talk about that.
Yep.
I'm not sure, um, what the outcome is for either one, I mean, either nuisance seems to me more like it would be arguing that the dogs, you know, running was continuously or, and not harmful.
Chair three?
Dangerous is dangerous.
Danger, dangerous to me sounds like it's probably a step towards something else, but at least, at least, uh, we're putting a foot down.
So, I'm going to close the testimony officially now, it's eight oh five. And, uh, we're now deliberating, so I know someone had a motion, we can motion to second, and then final discussion. The discussion will only be for board members at that time, and then we will vote, so.
Karen, three?
Yep.
So, in my history with these types of hearings, historically, as, as the chair so well stated, there are three options. One is to dismiss the complaint, meaning that, look, whatever happened, happened. At least for me, that's an option. But then to, it's like Singer's point, nuisance versus dangerous. Nuisance, historically speaking, has been, there are, let's just say, less, or perhaps more lenient, uh, conditions would be, would be put on. A dangerous dog, once so declared, for example, cannot be moved out of town. Once you, so a nuisance dog hypothetically, I believe, and I would invite Anne to correct me, could be adopted somewhere else. A dangerous dog cannot be moved out of town, for exa-, so, again, I'm not saying that's what happened, it's just for just for sake of conversation amongst the board, because the thought is, at least, to be a national law. Correct, and cause, you, you're basically giving that problem to somebody else. So, that being said, as Mr. Sanchez and others have been referenced, that there are specific conditions that you can put on a dangerous dog that have been legally upheld via, via, via national statute, whether it be insurance, whether it be, uh, outdoor kennel, et cetera. There are very, uh, prescriptive remediations that are often suggested. That's not to say there aren't other things that can get put on. But when we think around the delta between nuisance versus dangerous, I think that's one of the biggest keys, is nuisance historically has been, look, when you're walking your dog on the street, you always got to, you know, make sure, obviously, it has a leash, you know, put like a muzzle on it, et cetera. Dangerous dogs often are enclosed area, muzzle, insurance required, they're, they're, again, very, very prescriptive things. So I think it's up to the five of us first to decide which one of those three options we would want to pursue. Again, for myself, I'm not dismissing the complaint, to be, to be candid. And then it's just a matter of what level of conditions do we want to put on this, because I'm putting conditions on this, or at least going to suggest that, that, that conditions to the board. Whether it's nuisance versus dangerous, to me, it's half dozen of one, six of another. I would tend, because, and again, uh, Miss Weimer, I, I respectfully disagree with, with you on this one, in that I believe that the dog, that, that your dog perhaps inadvertently injured the, injured the child. I think it being a larger dog, if it actually meant to hurt the child, it would be a lot worse than it was. So that's why I'm being cautious on, on, on the words that I use. Again, I think you're, I think your dog's very dog aggressive. I think that the children, unfortunately, were harmed because of it, but I don't believe that your dog was purposely trying to attack a child. I do believe it was trying to attack a dog who, who happened then to injure a child, which is the part that I struggle with. So, again, whether it's nuisance versus danger, I look at it to say, at a minimum, what I would expect is, quite honestly, that the dogs are muzzled, or the dog, I should say, the dog is, is muzzled at all times outside of the actual home. So whether it be the deck, whether it be whatever, that, 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 that there's always a muzzle on the dog. And that, if in fact, that's broken, then, then, meaning that we find out via pictures or whatever, it's going to be a much different conversation. There could be additional things we could put on and ask for insurance purposes, for example, I believe that's subsection four of national law, uh, under, you know, a, 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 as, as you go down through this, under, under dangerous dogs. If, if we, if the board decides to go in that direction. But now, I, I, I was one of the people that drove by your house, and I see that it is all fenced in. Now, one of the options is to actually take a step further and say, you could actually have to have a pen with, with a roof, that too. I agree with that, as a wooden roof or something too. Uh, I think generally, as long as it's enclosed, yeah, so it's okay, it's, it's more around the, around the flooring. If the, i- if there is no metal floor or a floor to it, it's, it's, it's more design standards at that point, that it has to be basically dug down two feet so a, a dog couldn't get, get on anything. Again, I do not believe the dog should be, should be euthanized at this point. Uh, that's ju-, that's just me, but I'm, I'm ready to put on very strict measures, and whether we consider that nuisance versus dangerous, I think it's half dozen of one, six of, and six of, of another, but again, Miss, there's one, pardon me, Miss Weimer, Miss Weimer. I'm not looking to put your dog down, I am looking to make sure that literally this never happens again.
I'm the one who ever takes muzzle, um, of hanging the yard, whatever, you suggest, um, at least that I am the owner, so.
So what I'm going to recommend, quite frankly, because I don't believe that you're willing, that you are, does, actually, through the chat, can't figure it out. Would you be willing to give the dog up?
I don't know.
Okay, okay, that's, and, and that's more than fair. That being said, what I would make a motion, David, unless you already did, I'm sorry.
No, I, I would make a point about your, your, one of your conditions though.
Can I make a motion personally?
And, and Bill, actually, before you do that, again, I want everyone to be clear on if there's the difference between the nuisance and the dangerous. I know we talked a little bit about it, but we need to, we need to use that terminology. We, we need to understand the consequences as well.
I'm sorry for the chair, do we have to declare a nuisance or dangerous, is that something that we officially have to do?
Yes. Or you have to dismiss the complaint. Or you, we, sorry. So, Madam Chair, what I would, what I'm going to make a motion, at least for discussion, I hope for a second, is in that we, that we declare Blue a dangerous dog, not to euthanize at this point, however, that any time that the dog is outside of the immediate household, inclusive of the deck, outside the yard, walking on the street, in a park, regardless of where it is, that it have, it have, I'm assuming it's a male, that, that he have some type of muzzle on that will not allow him to open his mouth, one. Two, obviously, any time that he is outside of the merry, uh, that, so that's one, so muzzle. Two would be any time that he's being walked, A, obviously he has a muzzle on, but B, he always has, he's always chained, at, at the end of the day. Three would be, I'm going back and forth on this, oh, oh, yeah, oh, do we want to actually have an enclosed place in the backyard, knowing that the area is currently fenced in? That's the only one that I am currently going back and forth on.
So you're talking like a, 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 a chain link kennel that has a fence or something?
That, that has a-
That has like the cover on it.
Correct. And that, but that would at least give a, give a double security between them.
I, I have the whole deck fenced off now, eight foot high, too.
So right now, you just opened the door and the dog goes on the deck, and that's it. My concern is if it's another structure where you actually have to take the dog from point A to the, to a pen, now you have an opportunity for the dog to get loose, and I know they should be muzzled, but just think of that too. And we can't, okay, I guess we can do anything, we can ask, but I think it's unfair to say that they have to put a thing on your deck, but I don't know, it's this, but, but this is why we're discussing this.
No, yeah, and so, I, I don't personally want to go the, the insurance route, I think that would be an owner's condition and unfair to them. Even the kenneling, to put like a burden, some, you know, a financial burden, that might, just, you know, at some point there's a line, and I think if they have an eight foot fence, could constitute, you know, the same kind of restriction that, that's the count, because that's pretty high. The dog's not a deer, deer can clear tent, dog can't.
The dog's only legs are this big.
So, that being said, I do lean, if we're going to go that route, the muzzle, any time, even on a deck, if it's not in the house, to me, then would have to absolutely be a requirement, because there's no saying, right, accidents happen. You can have all the enclosures, all the fencing you want, but if someone leaves it open, well, it got out, it was an accident. I know, but the idea is we don't want another accident. So, and, and if this board decides to go the muzzle route, I will tell you if it helps, we did with our dogs, they're, what they're called, loose leads, like muzzles, they're muzzle trained, it goes over their mouth like a muzzle, but it's very loose. And you lead them around with that, it gets them used to the muzzle. My dogs don't bite, we still did that. We still bought those loose leads that go like a muzzle to get them used to it. I think that might be helpful if you're going to train the dog, if they decide to go the muzzle route, that would help them to train the dog to get used to having the muzzle on. My dog, mother was a pit mix, didn't mind it at all, but that gets, you know, very loose, and they get used to having it on their face. If the board goes that route.
So then, I, oh, sorry, I do have one more thing to say. If, if, um, if you, if both you guys came here tonight with me offering solutions, this would be a lot easier for us, like, we can do this, we can do that. Quite honestly, you came here kind of blaming the victim.
I feel like that's what they did to us, if you wanted to be, to be honest.
But a child, a child was bitten, but just, and, and so if we put conditions on, you have to understand in your heart, in your mind, that you, it's, this is very serious. And you have, so you have to, you have to understand that a mistake was made, and the child was bitten, you, and you actually said, you didn't think the child was bitten.
No, because I didn't see, I, I wa-, I was watching him the whole time, that's why I'm saying, he, if my eyes were not on him at all, then I could sit here and say, well, I don't know, and I'm like, I'm not, I don't have anything against him, I didn't know, we're going through this right under my neighbors. I don't, I don't, I still don't hold anything against him, I really don't, accidents happen, but I'm, I'm, to be honest with you, I'm wishing that they felt the same way. And the way you're saying that we didn't come here offering, is I'm just feeling like they just want to jump to, oh, we want a dog euthanized. There's ways around it, it's an accident, accidents happen, we aren't involved, and I apologize, they're not, I mean, so, like I said, I apologize, but I'm going to muzzle, do whatever it takes.
All right, all right, so again, again, just to, actually, I appreciate your comments, but you're right, we did close, I know, but you kind of, all right, so.
So Karen, I'm sorry. So, here's my motion, one, that we declare a dangerous dog. And really what that means, it's really important that, that, that you all understand this, and people in the audience, at least just for me. If the dogs run out and they're photographed in the street, my next step, more than likely, is going to put the dogs down, and I don't want to do that. So, dog, sorry, dog, and, and I don't want to do that. So I'm begging you, really, we don't want to see you again. Really, I, that's, we don't, we don't like this, but we got to protect everybody, we're trying to protect you, but honestly, and I mean this, no, no offense, I'm, I'm more interested in protecting the neighbors right now, but we can't see you again. So, one, that any time the dog is outside of, o- o- outside of the home, inclusive of the deck, your yard, or on the street, I don't care. If, if, if it's not inside your house, it has to have a blue, has to have a muzzle on. If I say dogs, I'm going to, I apologize, it's supposed to be just blue. Two, that, uh, this is subsection four C three, that when removed from the premises of the owner, the premises of the person keeping the dog, the dog should be securely, humanely muzzled, again, and restrained with chain or other testing device, have a minimum tensile strength of three hundred pounds and not exceeding three feet, like, basically, you even take the dog in the front yard outside of that, uh, fenced in area that you guys have, it's got to be on a leash, it's got to have a muzzle, and it's going to be a leash no longer than three. And the other one- Can you, can you amend that one, um, walk by an adult only? We have a lot of them. I mean,
We don't take them for a walk, because-
I mean, basically, any time that it's not in your fenced in yard, it's got to be on a leash and muzzle. So, next up, and, and this is, again, I, I know things happen, but you, but you all were delinquent, for lack of a better word, on the rabies certificate, we need to make sure that those are up, so I'm going to take a step further and say, you have to send it medical records every single year to the town clerk and the board of selectmen, and the animal control officers, basically saying like, look, here's Blue's records, it's all good.
This is, so this is sort of how this happened. I came down and did my dog license, um, we had the whole Corona thing outbreak. Well, to even get into a vet was like,
I get it.
I can't get, I, I actually had to put it for Blue, and I had talked to Anne, and she was like, well, I don't even know about it, go get him this vaccine right now until we have this meeting.
So, just to, again, in, in fairness, I hear what you're saying, and it, it seems like you had gotten your dog vaccinated up until that point. So, I, I don't know if that's taking it too far with, because it's a tracking thing, I, I don't have-
Required by law.
Feels, right.
All right, I'll pull that one out. So for all intents and purposes, A, dangerous dog, B, uh, always on a muzzle. Anytime it's not in your fenced in area, uh, no, no, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, let, let me back up. Anytime it leaves your house, it has to have a muzzle on, and by house, I mean literally, if, I'm assuming you have a sliding door or not, you know, but basically, however you get outside, the moment you open that door, dog has to have a muzzle on. Part two of that is, if on the off chance you do take the dog out in the front yard for a walk on the street, obviously, um, muzzle always. And then B, uh, it, you know, no longer than a three foot, uh, leash. But this is the part, like I said, now that we're, now that we're declaring it dangerous, if something happens again, there's a good chance that I'm going to motion to like put the dog down, and I don't want to do that. So please, I'm begging you, don't make me do it, but that's-
Is that a condition? The, um, euthan-, euthanize if the rules aren't followed?
No, I don't think that's- No, I don't think that's a condition, but that, but I, I will tell you, that will be my motion, if, if this gets brought back in front of us.
I'm just-
Yeah, no, thank you. Actually, Steve's the clerk, he's writing this down. So anyway, that, that is my, that is my official motion, because I think that will ameliorate, I hope, people in the audience knowing that there won't be another issue. And at the same time, the owners are saying like, there's not going to be another issue. But anyway, that's my official motion.
So we have a motion.
Can I second that, that I want to add one thing? So, um, I know, because I have dogs myself, that my home insurance covers my dogs, because I report that I have my dogs. Um, and a lot of times people don't tell their insurance that they have dogs, because it's, sometimes it's very expensive. And I just want proof that in case something does happen, and so the, the names are protected, that there is, I'm not saying additional dog insurance, that just that dog, their dogs are covered under their home insurance policy.
No, to, in passing, I'm not sure if this has a thing, but for your own benefit, by the way, there's a friend of mine, uh, no longer has his dog or his insurance, uh, because their dog bit someone's daughter, and they sued them over the bite, and their insurance company, who even knew they had a dog, when they found out once the dog bit someone, dropped them, they won't insure them. So you have to keep that in mind as well. You, you don't want to have your insurance drop your homeowner's insurance either.
Because it's a dangerous dog, subsection four says, the owner keeping the dog provide proof insurance in amount not less than a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, as long as it's, I mean, I'm not saying they have to get an additional insurance, as people do, as long as it's insured for that one- insured for that whatever amount under the, under their home insurance, and they'll have to provide evidence, it's coming on there from, they'll have to get a letter from their insurance company saying that the dogs are covered.
You guys could.
But that's not, that's not my house, that's not my responsibility, I'm a homeowner, I'm a renter.
Then, 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 then it will be renter's insurance then, whatever it needs.
My only concern was.
If he gives, because if there's a lawsuit, if, I'm sorry, the chair, if there's a lawsuit, and say there's a lot of damage, say there is, say, um, there's lots of medical bills, I'm not even saying like, um, ins- insurance for damage, but I go to the doctors and now my copayment is your ten thousand dollars, because I need reconstructive surgery. If there's no insurance and, um, the, you know, the dog owner doesn't have enough assets to cover that, then we're kind of not, we're not taking care of our residents.
Yeah, to your point, I'll let you amend my motion and include subsection four, for those in the audience. That the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance in an amount not less than a hundred thousand dollars, again, doesn't mean you have to put up a hundred thousand, just the insurance. Ensuring the owner or keeper against any claim, loss, damage, or injury to persons, domestic animals, or property resulting from the acts, whether intentional or unintentional of the dog, or proof that reasonable efforts were made to obtain such insurance if a policy has not been issued, provided however that if a policy of insurance has been issued, the owner or keeper shall produce such policy upon request of the hearing authority or justice of a district court, and provided further that if a policy has not been issued, the owner or keeper shall produce proof of efforts to obtain such insurance. That is my met motion, so there's three conditions now.
Perfect. Do you have any comments?
No.
I just, I had a general, uh, quick question for, for Anne. What's the maximum fine we're allowed to impose upon people?
So our fines who are progressive, first offense for very little, um, thirty, sixty, running it, uh, running it live is twenty-five, then goes to thirty-five the second time, fifty, seventy-five, and one hundred, thereafter, in a calendar year. And it's fifty dollars for their license in the state.
And, and for incidents like this about the. Are we allowed to?
Don't we also have, uh?
Is there any state laws that restrict the amounts of those fines, or is that a town bylaw?
I know, Anne, correct me, state law is overrides.
Yes, state law overrides, and state law is fifty dollars for their license. And all, and bylaws, the town set their own piece for doing, uh, running it live or.
We have.
So just, I know, just, thank you for that, that's a housekeeping thing, because we will be discussing process in the future, as a future agenda item, and I would like to revisit that in the.
Yeah, just to answer you, Karen, I believe we also have a leash law, which is dogs out on a leash, and that also is in steps, and the maximum for that is five hundred dollars. I think the third offense is five.
No, it's still the same, twenty-five the first offense, and this was the first offense.
Um, I go back and check, that was, um, Harway's motion, is it coming in, I thought that passed?
No, it's five hundred.
So we'll, we'll.
Five hundred, yeah, we'll take it.
We'll take, we'll talk about that in process.
Yeah, we'll talk about that, but we will.
That's my, that's my motion, I'm hoping that that's.
Yeah.
So first.
For Mary's sake, who will have to.
First and foremost, it's, it's a dangerous dog, and I'm not gonna go back to what that means, I think we all know now. One, muzzled at all times, no matter what. Two, anytime it's not on, like in, in your deck, or basically in your fenced area, it's gonna be on, on a leash wi, wi, with muzzle. And then three, uh, this subsection four, which we, I, you can actually have this copy if you like, um, that talks around, uh, the insurance, uh, component of it. Now, whether it's rental, I mean, again, I'm not sure exactly how that will work, being, being, being a renter, but there's a, there's a bunch of, in a sense, subsections to this that I think will, will answer your questions. Yeah, yeah, what else? So again, that is my official motion.
I'm officially second. Any further discussion?
Just to comment, I hope that we, the motion we're gonna vote on, I hope is, is, is the right solution, right? And I hope we're not wrong, I hope it's the right solution, and it enables you to keep your dog and keeps everybody else safe.
And before I take the vote, I just wanna thank everyone here, you know, for the most part, it was kept civil. Um, it's, again, and it's not easy, and we all take this very, very seriously, and I hope that came across. So thank you. And I now will call for a vote, all those in favor of Phil's motion as stated earlier.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries, it's unanimous.
Now, there's a part of this because it's through the chair, because it's a dangerous dog, now officially, Anne, I know that, I think you have to do some stuff with that, don't you?
Yeah, so I will have to come down and instead of.
Well, that's gonna be my next issue, because I'm gonna call the night, now that I know that happens here, to try and get another appointment to finish your review, because I swear to put it off on Friday. So I don't know, that could be two weeks away, last time was in October or something like.
It has been, there's a lot of people that.
Yeah, I think Anne, I think as long as I think, and again, it's just with Anne, but I think Anne, as long as you can show her, look, we have this one set for the baby shot. And from what I can see, we have the one for the baby shot, we have a muzzle that returns with being.
And as far as the motion and the, I guess we'll get them a letter.
If you wanna appeal, you can, so you know, yeah, I'll address.
Yeah, so I'll caution you though, so we'll decide if you wanna appeal a voice decision regarding dogs. And then they hope that the dog, that they, that they, or the change mind. And we've seen this, once someone appeals, they go to court to appeal a voice decision, the board cannot be able to see. But now that decision's in the hands of the judge, and what the judge rules, they're, they're, they're in the back of. They're on a second chance.
And honestly, this probably, this probably not gonna be a second chance with us, so really, I, I, I mean, I'll say it again, I'm begging.
Again, thank you, uh, to everyone, have a good evening. They say, okay. You wanna do a short reset? Okay.
No, I've seen a lot of downloads, too much information, but still.
So we are going to take a two minute reset. Say, eight twenty-eight, we'll be back by eight thirty.
Wait.
All right, so.
Thanks for the reset.
No, thank you. We're good?
Oh, come on, oh, sorry, sorry, I need to get this really. Yeah, thanks for coming, I know this. Not, actually, the meeting's not too late, but it's, uh, like ours, yeah.
Yeah, we, we need to break them up. Now our fans probably all left.
Is that, are we not live now?
I, I just took this off live later on.
We're not live?
No, we are, we're about to, huh? We're about to be.
Yeah.
We are about to be live again, so don't say anything bad.
All right, so, with that, the recess is over, it is eight thirty-five, again, it's a tough, it's a tough meeting, just a few. We are going back up to number four appointments and resignations noted at the time by the case tape, the incredibly accepting, uh, next year. And then we move on to talk about a possible, um, appointment. Interim, so we're gonna pick up that conversation, the reason why.
How early on muted?
The reason why we suspended it was we had to, um, we had a hearing at six forty-five, and we were already running late, so thank you for bearing with us, and we'll pick up kind of where we left off, and I know we have, um, that would be true with this, so.
Digital verification, now my reference to interim was obviously not pronounced, since like we had to.
Right, no, no, no.
That, that's what freaked me out, I'm sorry, I was like.
The reference to interim, yes. The reference to interim was, should things go beyond a certain point, and we find ourselves in that.
So we are, we are within our authority under appointments and resignations to do what I think I suggested earlier. So let's just pick up where we left off, and again, now we have, you know, you know, kind of getting input. Oh, yeah, do that, or?
No, yeah, Karen, through you, and, and this shouldn't be, but I'll answer, kind of, I'm staying. So, a couple of quick questions, then, if you don't feel, Lieutenant, if you don't feel comfortable answering this, please say no. First off, would you? Can you come on down?
Up there when you answer.
You are the least political command staff.
So I wanted to introduce yourself, please, and welcome. Thank you, and thank you for being here this evening.
Yeah, let me ask you some very straightforward questions. Are you interested in becoming the next chief of police of the town, Charlie?
I am.
Thank you, but like, believe it or not, that was the only question that I, I actually had. Okay, that. So that being said, I think we need to go one of two directions. For board harmony, if it makes sense, to, what I would say is, I am only interested in internal candidates. And it's obvious, again, I'm not gonna go into it much more, but obviously, I think second command would be. That being said, if it, if, if it's board harmony that we're looking for, um, if, if we are interested in a letter of interest from any internal candidates at the, at the sergeant level or above, who would be interested in applying for police duty, I would be, I would be happy to, to put this off. I, I would prefer to actually have this finalized next Tuesday.
I, I agree with you.
Okay.
To the chair.
So.
So then we put the posting up for Saturday.
I wouldn't even post it, meaning legally, if it's a promotion, and I, I asked Andrew to correct, legally, if it's a, if it was, if it's a promotion, which if we're, if we're assuming internal candidate, regardless, it would be a promotion, we do not have to post it.
I have a question, I'm sorry, so this is just, I'm just saying interim, I'm saying that we, we say anybody who's interested in being the interim, and then next week we decide, and then we get.
We don't need an interim.
You're not gonna do that formal process?
I think.
Is it dangerous, not?
I think we're trying to avoid it, so.
I think, to your point, we avoid the interim, and actually, actually, I think we actually, I think personally, in my opinion, as far as this process, it actually helps morale, because we're showing our, our, our department and our officers that we believe in them, we don't wanna go outside, we wanna promote from within, we wanna have succession, we wanna give other officers opportunity to take lieutenant's tests, and sergeant's tests, and chief's test. And I think if anything, this shows that we're putting our faith in that department, right? That you're gonna have a new chief, regardless, and then you're gonna have to have either a new lieutenant or a new sergeant, what you decide, which creates opportunities from within, right? This board has every right to go outside, we go outside for a chief lieutenant, officer, but we're choosing not to. And I think personally, the, well, again, I'll go back to one of the reasons we went through this entire process, was to allow us to do this right now, um, and to take that action, and then begin working on a, on a new succession plan, which would be, begin all the research, and all the proposals, and all the RFPs, and how to use S A S for that, but once we're police chief, that's a lot of work, and that's time consuming too. If, if Dan Dowd becomes the next chief, I, I would recommend immediately that we begin the process of a, of a, of a succession center, which we've gone on, which are very effective, that takes time. And we may have a lot of patrolmen and sergeants who, who wanna become a lieutenant next as well, and continue moving up internally, showing that we're gonna do everything we can to have that, that succession internally, and always promote from within.
Comfortably, which here, just a quick thing, only because Dan, this might be uncomfortable, Dan, you, I mean, I mostly want Dan, you can go. I mean, I'm, I'm, unless you wanna hang out.
The only thing I would say is, it's very competent, talented people that are talented, um, so I am certainly, like, I'm not sure, it's just a question of, do you feel comfortable with being behind the wheel for a period of time? It's interim, as far as that's a decision we both have to make, but by no means am I saying that there's not other talented people or the talent, certainly, if they were put in that position, where who allows. Well, Lieutenant Dowd, you, you didn't say that, and you actually were, uh, steering behind the wheel, for all the months that Chief Maxwell was the interim TA, and you ran the department basically as chief all that time, and also, to Phil's point, kept us out of paper. So, uh, and, and all that time, while we were on the board, did an exceptional job as the chief, uh, when he was out for the months as TA.
Like, I mean, so, Nancy, to your question, Catherine, to your question before, around, around interim, honestly, just for me, I'm not looking for an interim unless necessary. I would fully expect that, at least my hope would be that either, basically a member of the command staff, again, sergeant and above, would be the next chief of police in the, in a, 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 a permanent chief of police in the town of Charlemagne. All, I suppose, in the absence of, again, I had hoped, you know, potentially we could even, again, clearly, I'm showing my hand, and I have shown the hand, that I, that I'm supporting it now as the next chief.
And I agree.
No, no, I, no, I get it.
One hundred, one hundred percent, a hundred percent. I'm, I'm, I'm a process person, and I just don't want anybody externally questioning the way we do it. And that's why I say, anybody who's interested in being appointed interim, then you may get a decision. Send you, send your letters and.
I'm sorry.
So it's interesting.
So just, I wanna clarify, your point is Chief Max's last day.
October, I believe, October.
We have a police chief tomorrow.
We have a month to decide.
Correct.
So then, so then, so instead of me saying interim, so anybody who's internal, internal, I believe internal, a hundred percent, I don't wanna go out.
Right, let's figure out where, where, like, we all agree, so are we all saying interim?
Yeah.
Comfortably, yes.
I don't even disagree with.
No, no.
I'm just saying, we have to give everybody internally the opportunity to apply for this position, and if it's only a week, then it's only a week, if we set the rules, we set the rules. So by, by next week, we get resumes and letters of interest, and we, we have the, and then we, um, look through them. I mean, we know many of the internal candidates already, we know their accomplishments and everything else, but if we could have that in front of us, um, maybe for, maybe give us a day or two to look at them before our next meeting.
How about for board harmony?
Hold on one second, I know, I'm gonna ask our town administrator for a recommendation regarding, wanted to go that route, what kind of timeline would you prefer?
I'd recommend a week, so that, or I'd recommend doing it at your next regular meeting, just for the opportunity posting it for a week, getting the information, and getting it out to the board for review.
And for clarity purposes, and, um, in case you weren't with us when I went through the agenda earlier, our next regular meeting is September twenty-second.
So as much as I like, Andrew, if that's the case, I'm either gonna motion now or next week. We don't have that time, we don't have that luxury.
But when, so what's, so we, we can just open up and have, we have a client committee meeting, right, a joint?
That's, so the joint meeting with, um, FinCom is Wednesday, September sixteenth. It is an option, but I'm hearing, you know, that's on time.
I, I'm just concerned that anybody who's, might be interested, might wanna just take a day to think about it, and put their, fit their stuff together.
It's kind of, I think.
It's just unfair to say you have a day to think of whether or not you want this.
Does she have a special meeting next Thursday?
I mean, it could be Zoom if people can't come and just do it quickly.
I, I, I.
I know it's complicated, thanks, I'm sorry, I just think that we need to give everybody the opportunity to apply that, that internally.
And I do, I do agree, so I, I'm going along with the, the town administrator, because I don't think that's, I think it gives enough time for the candidates to apply to the position, it, it's, it seems like a fair practice process.
We have the chief here, and he kind of.
We know, you're interested, thank you for letting me confirm that. Um, can I just say one thing?
Sure.
The clarification, uh, with the chief, it makes sense to put somebody who would be in charge, like, at that day. Things could change in the meantime, you could select other person as chief, or he is, whatever you do, you should know who's going to be in command October third.
I'm gonna take care of that.
Give us a getting to appearance tomorrow.
Dan, I'll take care of that next time.
So the point being the interim, so.
That's what I was coming here, that's what I, that's what I wanted to get.
Oh, like, so.
So if I made you the chair of passenger, not making things complicated, my big issue is, it's not only what's best for the town, and what's fair for the, for the officers, but also for the new chief. I, I personally believe, if we were gonna say, hey, we're having a, a chief's test, or sorry, sorry, a sergeant's test, a lieutenant's test tomorrow, for your one day to think about, do you wanna take the test, or wanting to prepare for the test, you couldn't do that, that would be completely unfair. I think if you're a police officer and you're a patrolman, you know if you wanna be a sergeant, you know if you wanna be lieutenant, you know what your desire and what your ambition is, you don't have to take a week, or even three days to decide what my ambition is. You know, I know, I wanna be a chief, I don't wanna be a chief, I wanna be lieutenant, you, you know. We wouldn't wanna put anyone in an unfair position where they gotta have to prepare for assessment center or, or, or a test. But you kind of know if you wanna go, if you wanna work your way to ranks. That, I think, is one of the things, I don't, I don't agree with the need to give people days and, and a week to decide if they wanna actually advance their career, they know.
I don't care if they decide, but they can provide the resume, sometimes people don't have an up-to-date resume in their, in their back pocket, sometimes people have to create ones, that's.
Right, but that, but to your point, but that doesn't take days, and I think the timing things I'm trying to get to along with, um, is that we don't really, again, have the luxury of time. If you wanna give a new chief. If you want to give a new chief the opportunity to spend some time with the outgoing chief, knowing they are the chief, and go through a transition so that everything is smooth, you would like that person to be able to potentially start before the new chief leaves. If we put this off for a week, to Andrew's point, and then we do a week from there, it's never going to happen. It will never happen. The new chief will have zero time to retire.
But we're retiring internally, though. So they will have an opportunity to kind of know that any.
Well, they won't, because if Lieutenant Dowd is the next chief, and he knows that, a week, two weeks before Chief Maxwell leaves, then he'll have a week to prepare and spend extra time with Chief Maxwell. If it wasn't Lieutenant Dowd, who's one of the sergeants, then they would, should have that week or that two weeks' time, because they haven't had that luxury. They should have that time with Chief Maxwell. So, oh, you're the next chief? You should have time with him. They're not going to get that. And if we put it off, you're going to wind up with a new chief who on day one is like, this is great, I've had no time with my predecessor, so there was no transition. I hope I don't drown. You know, I mean, I just think it's important that we don't put that off. And I think we should, if anything, if we don't walk out of here tonight with a motion and a vote, then we should at least walk out of here with a timeline that says, we're going to agree to have this decision made by this date, with negotiation by this date and announcement by this date, ensuring that whoever that candidate is, is decided, negotiated, done, a week before October 3rd.
May I suggest a compromise? So first and foremost, let me make first motion to say that, if on the off chance that we do not have a police chief as of October 3rd, that Lieutenant Dowd will be acting chief until, until that changes. Is that a motion? That is a formal motion, second.
Yeah, okay. I need your discussion. That's not going to happen.
Congratulations.
Okay, we should have a vote on that.
All right, here, not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, my second motion is that, I'm trying to, again, I'm hearing both sides, and again, we're trying to be reasonable to promote board harmony. That I think a week is fair. What I would recommend as a compromise amongst the five of us, with much very different views, is that we ask, starting tomorrow, for any, against sergeant, internal sergeant of both, to submit a resume and letter of intent or a letter, whatever you want to call them, basically, to us by end of day Friday, and that we conduct interviews on next Tuesday night, assuming the board can call us special meeting if people are available. And that we actually, more hopefully, we can vote that evening, after interviews and after whatever else that we need, all the information that are required, that we can vote as of end of business day Tuesday, to enter in negotiations with a candidate, whoever he or she.
But to that point, if you were going to do that, A, it has to be public. Interviews have to be public. You would have to have questions agreed upon by every board member in advance, and ensure that every single candidate is asked the exact same question. There can't be any variation. So it's the same, is when you go down.
It could be one, it could be, do you need to, we just pay three board members? We can figure it out if we need to.
I, again, I would prefer all five of us be available, just because this is now a C-level executive, that we're, that we're going to put in, so we should have, even if we don't agree on the choice, we should all have a say. So Karen, are you, is everyone available on Tuesday?
I'll make myself available.
I'll make myself available.
It's just, just under the finance.
No, that's Wednesday, I believe.
What, what can we, which?
Wednesday, September 16th is finance, so this will be Tuesday, the 5th.
Okay. But what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, is tomorrow's the 9th, so we want people to submit their resumes by Friday or not, or not.
Oh, I'll just say by email.
That way.
By intent slash resume, whatever, just we, so, so we give all internal candidates that are, that in our.
Sergeant of both.
That in the both, the opportunity to let us know that you're interested, so we can move resumes and whatever to make our decision. I'm just trying to make this as.
Are we going to interview everyone who puts their name?
I bet. I don't think, do we need to discuss that right now? Do we need to get through?
Well, I'm sorry, Karen, I'm actually assuming, under my idea, for lack of a better discussion, that we would actually have interviews potentially on Tuesday, and hopefully make a decision Tuesday evening as a compromise between following due process with a certain amount of.
Efficient food.
Yes, and but at the same time, knowing that we are somewhat timed, because, you know, with the non-intern chief, with, like, Chief Maxwell leaving in early October, this way, we get letters of interest in, it gives people a chance, but then we can also hopefully make a determination Tuesday.
Right, I mean, I'm sure we can move people out or in based on resume, based on experience, based on, you know, whatever, we can figure out the, who we need to give interviews to, and we can make it work.
All right, so with all due respect to every single one of you sitting around this table, is this, should we have other people? Is this the best practice? What normally occurs? Five slot people interviewing one of the police chief?
I'd say it's our choice, though. I would say yes.
I agree with Bill. And I got to go back to, the entire reason we went down this road was for this reason. I think, again, I go down to the point, there's more to it than that. So as fairness to every officer in the department, we also have to let them know whether to start preparing, studying, for an assessment center, or a task.
We're really worried about comparing our studying, right?
Although they need to prepare for that.
On the 16th, 15th, right, on the 15th, are you qualified and ready to step in at that?
For the chief position, correct.
For the chief's position. Everybody else's promotion, everybody else's test, and everybody else, they're.
Right, but the minute you have, let's say, let's just say, maybe you have a lieutenant becoming chief, now you have to schedule an assessment soon. The officers have to have a fair amount of time. Just, you know, just go ahead and take it, that's exhausting. You have to prepare. Let's say it was a lieutenant test, I think that's, I haven't been validating with a list, you have to have them either in the assessment center, if it was a sergeant, that list is valid, they got to study and take a test.
Does that prevent us from choosing a chief one?
No, what I'm saying is, it's a domino effect, so whatever piece you move, you also have to be prepared to move the other pieces, and to give every officer in that department fair chance to still be prepared to also move up right behind.
Thank you. Do we, we, are we, can, if we choose a, if we choose a chief on Tuesday, are we prepared to do all the other things that David says that?
That gives you time.
It all falls.
Okay, so then that's, then that's.
It's all not going to happen before the end of the month.
Oh, no, no, no. All I, all I need to do is get a chief, right?
I'm just going to make a motion, just to make a formal statement, because Karen, I should feel a lot. That, I'm going to make a motion that we call a special meeting for next Tuesday night, to interview candidates for the next town of Charleston police chief. And the only people who are invited to apply, and the only thing we need for applications, as far as I'm concerned, are resume and a letter of interest.
Agreed.
And I would like them by end of day Friday, 5:00 PM Friday. And that anyone who gives their name, as far as I'm concerned, if it's the only thing on the agenda, we can, we can, we can interview everybody. And then, and then my goal at the end of that evening would be to make a motion, whether we, for, to hire, to opt, to enter the contract negotiations with our next chief of police.
I love it.
So, they should go, the emails need to be sent to Andrew, and then after 5:00 PM, he can disseminate the resumes to members of the board, the letter of interest, but we can read it back then.
Assuming, assuming the five of us are available today.
Make it work.
Zero, 22:00, 6:30, we're going to have a talk.
And we can do, we can do group interviews, right? We can have, whatever, if there's more than one, we can just.
Generally, you want to have.
I'd rather it be dependent, that's just me.
You don't want one listening to somebody else's answers either. You want to keep them separate.
Even, even though it's lower. So, that being said, that's my, that's my motion, whether we start at 6:00 or 6:30, I can do either way. It's really upon the convenience of the, of the board.
And if you have more than one candidate, you have to have them here, where they can't see the TVs, so they can't hear the other answer.
And you have phones that blind.
Well, we did that with the chief of staff, so I can make them separate, so anyway, interviews.
Anyway, that's my motion.
Perfect. I second that.
All right, and I go back to my question, Andrew, just, so, oh, it's just us? I'm assuming the TA? Do we need anyone else?
We have all the most brilliant minds in this room, so.
I better leave them. Yeah. If we can reach, I would like to think that between all the very qualified sergeants we have, and, and, and as you said, as far as, that there is a, that there was a majority of the board, i.e. three votes, that we can eventually agree on.
I absolutely.
That one of those.
I don't think there'll be any. I think it'll be a 30-second vote.
Okay, all right.
So anyway, Richard, that is my official.
We had a motion with a second, yes? Yes, it's like deja vu here. All right. I'm not hearing discussion, so we're going to vote all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair both sides.
So, Richard, what I would recommend is to be, Andrew, and just because, Dan, since you've done interest, what I recommend, Andrew, you reach out to Max, let him know what was said, and we need info by end of day Friday. But beyond that, any, any, any officers watching, be ready for Tuesday.
For Friday, be ready for Friday.
Yeah, I mean, this one comes out the next day.
Thank you. He's probably thinking.
He just said no when he asked. Why did we speak? No. Thanks, LT.
All right, now.
Again, it's all a problem.
A lot of heavy lifting tonight.
We're doing well, mom. We got different ways to get there.
So.
All right, ready? One times.
All right, this is not a problem. We're moving on down, new business, we don't have anything on new business, right? That's not a title.
I have nothing on that.
All right, and now we're on old business, the town council proposals.
So at the board's last meeting, there was discussion on town council proposals received. Question arose regarding whether or not the discussion would take place in executive session, because I had a couple of samples that may involve an executive session. As directed, I sought counsel's opinion, and you find that, you reviewed the video of the board's meeting that night, and so I need to better understand the question of what was being asked. Here, nothing in the discussion would qualify for a closed session, whether he said that his office is not involved in any ongoing litigation. If there is any discussion that needs to happen, respected litigation strategy regarding, regarding an ongoing litigation matter, attorney from the other component of this area, it's difficult to mean that such a discussion needs to be made in the context of the process, or doing so, the board would run the risk of an open meeting.
Okay. All right. Taking a one.
I mean, I don't care who goes first. I was on the floor, you guys go.
You know what, if you don't mind, I'm going to start over here.
Yes.
You two gentlemen have been speaking a lot, not that we don't appreciate.
No, I'm fine. I'm fine to burn. I would actually, I would prefer to.
But everyone will have their chair.
I'm good.
Steve, you have anything to say on this?
I don't. I reviewed both proposals in detail. They're both good proposals, there are pros and cons on both sides, like in the discussion.
I believe that Charleston, the growing town, there's a lot going on. We have so much developing, we have new 20s, so many other things. You know, oil spillings and everything else we could possibly imagine, not now. And we need to have a firm that can provide all-inclusive services. I feel like we outsource so many, we have to go outside of our town council so often, probably more often than not. And I feel like the, here at O'Connell, tells pretty much specialists in every area, so all of our business would be taken care of, for the most part, with one firm. And we dealt with them, the professionalism and the timeliness and the short, quick answers make sense to me, so. Thanks.
Okay. Yes, I've gone over the proposals as well. I don't think there's any question as to the qualifications that we have for, there's both quality. I will say, multiple firms, right, have all done work for the town in various capacities. However, to me, there is, are two very big differentiates. I'm less concerned with the efficiency of one law firm, but I am with that for right now. And looking at the proposals, there are two areas to me that, in all, in all fairness, I think they're really close. Attorney Cosgrove's institutional knowledge, I could put it that way. The who's, what's, where's, when's, how's, lives, history. The other proposal, the other firm, as good as they are, as quality firms they are, they just simply do not, they can't, they can't. And as far as the cost of the town, it's actually not close. Seventy to seventy-five dollars per hour less, but our current council has done an impeccable job. He's represented the town very well. It's like a seventy, seventy-five dollar hour difference. It was significant, it's a significant cost difference. So.
It was forty.
To me, could you check that out, Andrew, it was like around seventy dollars. Well. And the proposal, I'm buying, I can see as well. But even honestly, if it's seventy, if I'm wrong, it's forty, my apologies. Forty dollars an hour is still a significant difference, when you bill it out hourly for all the hours for the work done. So whether it's forty or whether it's seventy, not how you slice it, that's a significant difference. That's a significant cost to the taxpayer, to get a new law firm that does not have that institutional knowledge. And I will say, as someone who's sat on this board and has worked with Attorney Cosgrove, I've never met a lawyer with his level of integrity. You know, we don't hire lawyers to do what we want. We hire them to do what's best. We don't hire them to tell us what we want. We hire them to tell us what we have to hear, what we need to hear, whether we like it or not. But he's always been truthful, open and honest, and always done what's best for this town, period. And that being said, I'm going to make a motion that we reappoint Attorney Cosgrove as town council. I don't even think it's remotely close. Nothing, I guess, I'm a great firm, but this is apples and oranges.
Did you want, I wanted to give you a chance to actually speak.
Cool, yeah. So, when you make a change in staff, there are primary reasons why you do it. One is financial. Let's start there. I think we all agree, having read the proposals, that even if we tweak the numbers, being, i.e. paralegal versus legal services, illegal legislation versus whatever, that Attorney Cosgrove comes in cheaper, but just, let's call it that. So I immediately cross that off as a reason to change. So financially speaking, especially under the container model, that may actually behoove us to pursue that regardless, because it allows us the opportunity to basically say, look, no matter what, it's going to be this much, and then it's going to go, I think, with like 165. So I think from a financial perspective, for taxpayer money, it makes sense. I think, and I also agree, that legal services should not be provided based upon cost, because you get what you pay. So the second part of that is, you know, because it's like I was saying, it's point, it's around institutional knowledge. Cosgrove and Black have, you know, represented the town for multiple, multiple years. I mean, Jim, you can ask a question, too. And he'll think back, and he'll have all the records going back 10 to 15 years of, well, here's what happened, here's why, and like, here's my record. So again, this is not indictment of Merrick at all. I think they're fantastic attorneys. I've beat them in the past. Can't say nothing missing. The third part is overall success rate. Reviewing what the proposals, when Cosgrove does have to litigate, they're almost always successful. When those opportunities have not been successful, often, as we all know from different boards and with attorneys, it's often because they're following direction from the board down a, down a path. So that's the other piece, that Attorney Cosgrove has never gone down, he's never gone rogue. Anything that he and his firm has ever done has been direction by the TA and/or a majority of the board selected. So when you do that type of comparison, again, this is not indictment whatsoever against Merrick, because I think they're fantastic lawyers. Just, what is the overwhelming desire, or my overwhelming optics to say, yes, we should make a change, and here's how I can justify it to the taxpayer? Literally, I mean, outside of, to your point, I mean, you know, Merrick's a lot bigger, so we have, you know, more resources available. But outside of that, every other checkpoint goes to Cosgrove and Black. So I would echo, so like I was saying, if you were to make a motion around reappointing.
Yeah, unmuted, I don't know.
For all of those reasons. So if that was a formal motion, that was a, then I will second that, second that motion, at least, at least for discussion. Like Karen, you can speak, that's all, sorry.
You can see you.
Who needs me?
Andrew.
Sorry. Coming up here.
Steve, did you, now have you heard some discussion? You didn't say much. Did you want an opportunity to express your thing?
I, there are, there are, I believe it's more than forty-eight dollars.
That's significant. That's a significant amount.
Yeah, no, of course, especially out of all the, all the hours in the year. I, I don't have a whole lot of experience with Cosgrove, outside of just watching the last few years. You guys know him. I haven't really seen anything that I thought, outside of maybe being led down the road by, by a TA or, or, so I'm at that time. Outside of, outside of that, I don't, I don't really have a problem with it. Merrick O'Connell, the other top man, of course. Merrick O'Connell, the other top line, of course. Twenty, twenty percent high. You, we, we do have to justify that. If, if it's, if it's time, if we think they can do it quicker and, and, and. The angle of mouth, the money that we spend on attorneys is insane.
If I may, I'd rather have it done right and quicker. And we've had that. So and to you, to your point though, Steve. Having dealt with Attorney Cosgrove for many years, I think he'd obviously, I think he'd obviously be hard to pressure to find a, a, a finer person with more integrity. And he's never failed to represent this town in a very positive way. He really truly cares about us. And that, that's where, where my vote lies, which is why I made that motion. And I'll also just out there, you know, sometimes change is good. But it's also, I think, dangerous just to change for the sake of change sometimes. And I think this is one of those times where the town is best served by keeping our current council.
Before. Do you have anything else to add before I speak?
I would love to say something, but I'm scared to say something. That's why I wanted to go in a direct, but, so.
So it's great. So before I, I made a couple of comments, I didn't know if the TA had any input, if you're welcome. Because I know you've dealt with. The post, but again, I don't want to put you on the spot, but that's what you get for being TA.
I know. I would say I have experienced the, with all, you know, my, my experience dealing with different councils from different towns. It's about dealing with, you know, the council, the, the right council for the right. For the right, yeah, issue that's going on. You know, if you try to, you know, use a labor specialized attorney for general counsel, you know, you, they're gonna have a lot more difficult time keeping up with it. Versus if you use a labor attorney for, for labor issues. That's just, you know, the way that I operate, you know. So, you know, having, having a general counsel with historical knowledge of what's going on, I think it's very valuable. But for, for the specialized litigation issues, for, you know, reach out for, for specialized counsel. That's, that's my, my personal view on, on the use of counsel. So use that as, as you made your decision.
Thank you.
Great. Let me, I'll be, so one, one of my main issues is, and I know you guys are gonna shut me down, but I'm gonna start and you can shut me down if you want.
Don't make me use this chat screen.
When, when, when we had the issue with our TA and years ago, a TA's salary was, was zeroed out. And we had lost it. It was a big issue. And then we hired, and then we paid Cosgrove to put a, a little addendum into our contract saying, if this ever happened again, we get a fifty percent salary payout. And that was it. So we paid an attorney to write up that contract so we would protect the town. And then years later, it happens again and. And to be honest, half of the salary would have been much cheaper than like the final payout. And we did have Cosgrove advise us for, for the last issue that we had. And what the, the addenda, that the, the section of the contract that he wrote didn't, it's like he, he worked, it didn't work. That many years later and it cost the town a lot of money. And I have a problem with that. I, I had, I had gone to many of my personal attorney friends and said, all right, I want to do this, but. Am I putting my talent liability? Because I might be open mouth and I may be, you know, I, I might not have that filter. But I'm, I'm an auditor and I, everything I do is, is based on liability. So I didn't go to town meeting and make the motion because I didn't know what I was doing. You know, I'm a eleven. Don't make me look like an idiot. And then I was talked down and, and we heard, you let me get sued, you let me get sued, this is bad. Well, if we paid the attorney to write a contract to protect us, it didn't work. Whether it was a relationship, a personal relationship with our TA, or whether it was, we, we truly did something wrong, I don't, it just seemed like it didn't work. And a little bit, I lost a little bit of respect for that, that. It, it, it's like when that happened, the town wasn't being protected anymore, that the TA was being protected and he doesn't work for the county. He works for the town. And that's. My main ish, my, 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 my main, I mean, there's other instances, but I'm not gonna go into personal stuff. I'm just saying, is, that's just an instant of an example of why I think we just need some new blood and somebody who understands a lot of the new social media stuff. And just, is just more in tune with all the many changes that are, that are happening in the world today.
So if I'm in that chair, so, so Patsy. I understand that is your perception, because you weren't in a lot of those meetings. What I can tell you with one hundred percent certainty is perception, your perception is not reality. It's not your fault. You weren't in meetings, you don't know. But what I can assure you is, there was never a relationship there. There was never an attempt by an attorney to protect the town in his favor. And I have to be careful too, because we don't want to break any laws. But what I can tell you is, in those circumstances. To Bill's point, Attorney Cosgrove only ever did was board directly with the Duke. And even in those executive session meetings, he cautioned the board on actions to take and not to take to protect his town without question. And not a doubt in my mind, I was in those meetings, he's never, ever betrayed the taxpayers of this town, not in those meetings either. And he didn't. And what happened in that meeting and what happened in the outcome of those decisions and actions have nothing to do with Attorney Cosgrove whatsoever, not in the least.
So I'd like to say something, and it's not easy. I am familiar with Attorney Cosgrove very well, respect him, highly respect him, worked with him. I echo some of what Patsy has said insofar as the town, the growing needs of the town. I, you know, what is the best interest of the town, our size, with the different challenges that's on the horizon, that's all relatively new. Things like, you know, we've been dealing with the soul or with marijuana, with things, we go on and on and on. I think it's really important that we have someone, and, and like, I think you had mentioned, when you have a firm that has so many, many people right on staff, that you can access time. In a timely manner. I think that's very, very important. I think, again, I think Attorney Cosgrove is very good in supporting the proactive, some of his suggestions, recommendations, but. Moving forward, I don't know that that is what's best. And I always go back and say, you know what, looking, looking at everything, costs, efficiency, access to other talented, you know, lawyers, time. Going on my past experiences, which I can, you know, again, I can't get into certain things because obvious reasons. But based on all of that, I am leaning towards. Voting no, even though I may be in the minority. And it's, it's the most painful, quite honestly, but no, it, no, I'm basing this on. What I believe to be my, you know, the interpretation of what I have experienced and what I have witnessed at town meeting. What I have witnessed that, you know, different recommendations, again, always, you know, this is not, which, again, Attorney Cosgrove is always. In his heart of hearts, I think, you know, this is in the best interest. Even, I, I think one thing I can cite is the recommendation with the, the thing at the town meeting, Facebook, social media. That could have, if all of that, and I know it was, it was offered by the town employees or whatever, but with his, I think it was overlooking it. But I do think if that would have moved forward, that would have, in my opinion, could have opened up the town for different. Problems. So again, based on my experience, that's, and it's, it's not easy, but that's, that would be my recommendation. Where this town is, where this town's going, what this town needs. And so, yeah, so we all, it's, it's not an easy night, is it?
So Madam Chair, if I may, you mentioned things like cost efficiency, knowledge capability. Attorney Cosgrove checks off every single one of those boxes. Every single one. And I, I will tell you, I'm glad this meeting's televised, because there's not one mitigating reason presented tonight to make a change. And how many times have I heard this process, personally? I'm telling you what my opinion is, and I can almost guarantee you, it's shared by a lot of people, really, that why I choose me. There's not been one genuine reason given to change. Now, Attorney Cosgrove at town meeting, or at second meeting, he doesn't vote. He has no vote. He didn't vote to do any, town meeting attendees, they vote. That's the town's legislative body, they vote. He gives advice. How many times, how many ignored that advice? Plenty. Followed it? Plenty. How many times has the board's selection followed that advice? Plenty. Ignored it? Plenty. It's never the attorney's fault. They give the advice, we make those decisions, not the attorney. He's given good, solid advice every time. How many can vote however they want, regardless of what he says. He never did anything other than give advice. It's always solid.
Yeah, David, it's, again, just make it very clear, we're not getting into, it's just not anything personal.
So we, we have our opinions on that. We differ on that greatly, right? So Madam Chair, just one, one more quick comment. What I will say, if someone echoes what's like the singer said, is that. I want a conservative attorney. I want someone who is going to keep the town out of trouble. Who's not going to be aggressive and want, again, this is, I, I want to be careful to make sure, the big asterisk, I'm not saying Merrick's like, at all. But just in general, what I look for in, in council is conservative advice that will protect the taxpayer. Just like I'm saying, his point, the board of selectmen are the final determiners of contract agreements, of signing off on anything. Town meeting votes are done by town meeting voters. Town council can give advice and guidance. But he or she never takes a vote. It's up to us to either ignore that advice or accept it. Since I've been on the board, Jim and I have had a couple disagreements on certain things, but I respected his advice. Because I think it helps the town, and it's always helped the town. I think if we change tonight for right or wrong, perception is, is going to be that this is a personal thing. I'm not saying it is, I'm not accusing anyone of it, but the perception is going to be that this is simply a personal thing.
Yeah, I will, I will say this. I, I absolutely disagree with you. Everyone is on, you know, we're expressing our opinions. We can't control how, what people think. But we are, I, I certainly not, this is not personal. This is based on, again, decisions that I, I have witnessed. Feedback I have, the feedback that I have received from comments or his remarks at certain town meetings by the citizens. You know, maybe crossing the line a little bit with giving advice or, again, but this is not personal. So don't even go down that route, Bill, because I, I absolutely disagree with you. We are all professionals here. And this decision is based, has nothing to do with, I am speaking for myself.
So what decisions did the board disagree with that, that Cosgrove ha- ha- has given us advice?
She didn't put clarification. He doesn't, he's not a member of the.
Opinions.
So the reality is, if you don't like the decision, then instead of blaming the attorney, you should be blaming the town meeting voters. You should be blaming the board of selectmen, because they're the ones who take the action. Jim Cosgrove has never taken a vote or an action. That's not what the attorney is paid to do. Any action you don't like was taken by a board or a town meeting vote. So to Bill's point, what piece of advice did you not like?
There was a recommendation made, and again, I have to, because I. Because it was, it's happened in the past to do something and take an action that. Would have been detrimental, and I think we all would have agreed. But again, I can't get into it because I'm just, it's all.
Correct. And my interpretation of that is the exact opposite. And to your point about comments, as, as many people who, for whatever reason, whether personal or process, would like to see a change. I can also guarantee you, there are many residents of this town and employees who have dealt with Attorney Cosgrove, who actually think he's the, the best attorney we've ever had. You know, there are people who like me, there are people who hate me, who will vote for me, people who will never vote. Same thing with an attorney. There are people who are gonna give you bad comments about an attorney and positive comments about an attorney. Has he ever misrepresented this town? No, he never has.
No, I don't think anyone is saying he's misrepresented the town. Again, don't get.
The insinuation has been tonight that he's done something wrong. The insinuation has been that he's given, he's, he's taken four actions on behalf of the town, which he doesn't know where it goes. They acted our direction or town meeting's direction. So there have been insinuations made tonight about actions an attorney for the town has taken, when they don't take actions unless told to do so. So like in a, there's gonna be, there's a perception.
In his, in his new proposal that he just sent us, Attorney Cosgrove, is that less expensive than what we're paying him now? Yes. Yes, yes.
Andrew, correct me, but I believe in Karen for you, the retainer last year was seven grand, I think this year, but at least on the RFP, it was sixty.
What he provided was a per hour basis of sixty-five. Per.
It was the retainer.
It was a retainer, but we, right now, we do the per hour.
Right, right, exactly. So I, I, looking at the numbers, it would appear to me that based upon the retainer model, assuming the same number of hours built last year, that it would be. Although Madam Chair, to, to your point, I don't know honestly if our discussion is going to sway our, our, our individual pains at this point. I'd say honestly, I, you know, I say that we just move.
Are you trying to move the question?
Yes, that honestly, this is one of those examples where, where like, we can talk forever, but it doesn't.
Okay, so, but having said that, is everyone good? We're taking, taking the vote? So we have a motion in a second to retain Attorney.
Constable and Black.
Thank you. There's no further discussion? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? No, no. So the motion passes.
We'll take it again next year.
And I would like to say something, and just a thank you. You know, we didn't all agree. But I, I've been on a lot of boards with a lot of different personalities. And I, I'm very happy actually with the conversation we had, even when we disagreed, everybody was polite and professional.
It's amazing that I've ever heard you say something.
Oh, good.
All right. So moving on to special town meeting, post warrant review draft of special town meeting.
We should have. Draft one.
I'd like to thank the planning board specifically for waiting for most of their articles until October, so thank you.
Oh, join our monthly.
I mean, this, it's all pretty straightforward. I mean, there's nothing, there's not, I mean, and people at home, there's, there's nothing on here that's, at least outside of voting.
There might be some minor tweaks. We're, we're just looking for some guidance on the old fifth one. Whether or not we need to take that motion or not, because it was never, it was a trust document issue to the actuary back when it was first passed. And now that they've gotten a municipal modification, there's some discussion as to whether or not the trustee, which is the treasurer collector, can just sign a new trust document and submit that for it. Because we're under a difference. Different general law now that that, whether or not that has to go before town meeting for adoption. So we're just, we're hammering that out. It's on there as well.
Really the big argument or debate could be around article two, around free cash itemization once we find, like, get the numbers, which I'm assuming we're gonna have next Wednesday with.
It's actually the article.
Yeah, so, so outside of that, I mean, you know, this is, this is innocuous as it can be.
And just for the, the public, the, a reminder, the meeting is going to be the special town meeting, it's Tuesday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Oh my God, it's eleven.
I know. More, more to follow. And this will be on our, it's always on our website, right?
Yes.
So if you wanna, if you wanna read it, feel free.
Won't be up yet, not until you guys officially.
Yeah, not yet. Don't, don't look for tomorrow.
So Karen, through you, I would look at just to, to, to close the warrant and, and approve.
Probably just close the warrant.
Yeah.
Probably just approve it as next regular, and discuss the financing.
So motion to, to officially close the warrant.
So. On the right time to ask a question about. So just what was the. That is the, okay, that's planning board. We that they want to amend the. Parking requirements for commercial buildings. They, I think they were, they're looking at is like large. Distribution type facilities may overly spec their parking right now based off the current bylaw, so they're looking to amend that to be more aligned with a large. Yeah, a large building with very few employees.
So we have motion. So we have a motion in the second to close it, vote, vote. No other discussion? All those in favor for special town meeting warrant?
Aye.
Aye.
Karen, do you want to bring it up?
But wait, there's more.
No, there's not.
All right, so where are we? All right, so I, I don't know, we might need to unmute someone. So we have the Public Safety Building Capital Campaign Steering Committee, a quick report. Steve Coleman or Marie Smith, are you, are you on?
I'm guessing it was named Austin Powers.
He may be, I would not surprise him.
All right. I guess, yeah, I just don't want to get, okay, I have it right here. So I can actually read it. So I'll just give a quick update. Obviously, tonight we had a donation from Cornerstone Bank, and it was $2,500, so we thanked that, thanked them for that. And that, again, was for the child public safety building, and, but wait, there's more. So we also heard that we're going to be getting a donation from the Southridge Credit Union, in total amount of $5,000, so it'll be $2,500 over two years. So thank you to Southridge Credit Union, but wait, there's more. But I wish, actually, we'll see that soon, but Mossi Masee has donated, or is pledging to donate $25,000.
Wow.
Mossi. So, and that's in like one week, so I think that, I think we're approaching, I think we're getting close to $400,000. Yeah, we think we can do the million by November 3rd, just saying, you know, and every dollar we raise helps to, that's less than a loan, so it's saying helps the taxpayers. And they're also, we're also doing a lot of outreach, we're organizing outreach just to any group, whether it's like a lake association, a lion's group, you name it. If you want information, we're doing kind of the Zoom outreach kind of things, but, you know, you can have tours. People, we want to know, you know, what your questions are, so they can be answered, whether it's a capital campaign question, whether it's an actual, you know, question about the plan itself. I know they've been doing a great job answering that, but finances, we got it all, and of course, we've got to put a plug in for the website, which is.
Trump Building, yeah.
Right, everything you need to know is really there, but there's also contact information, if there's any questions, please ask, thank you. And that's, I have to.
Karen, it's all right, I will give a shout out to Rob Barton, who's been incredibly active on social media, like, every time somebody posts something that may just say, be, posted erroneously, he steps in in a very kind and professional manner.
He's not always nice to him.
Correct, he's being very patient and is giving factual information, so shout out to Rob.
Yes, I just want people to understand. All right, next, the U.S. Policy Review, we don't have any, right? That's an easy one. Town Administrator Report, Andrew.
We can just, this is my report this week, it's really just ongoing.
All right, done. All right, other business unknown at time of post. Then next meeting announcement, again, we have a joint meeting, the SLF Board with FinCom on Wednesday, September 16th, 2020. We're going to finalize the special town meeting warrant articles at that time.
Where is that, 23? That's a common question.
And then, of course, our regular meeting is September 22nd, and then we just added, did we add one?
Yeah, on the 15th, but we didn't save time, I mean, six, does that work for six, everybody?
15, six works, yes.
I mean, I can do it anytime.
And that's specifically for.
Only police chief interviews.
And potential, sure.
I mean, honestly, Patsy, we use 6:30, if it makes you like these.
They always say that I'm going to leave at all times.
So what time should I call you to get out of there?
Is 6:30 better? Can we just 6:30? No, that's not, yeah.
Text Patsy at 5:30, the word be.
Work, work always comes first, that's all, work, working first.
All right. And so next would be, all right, Jerry, because we have an executive session, Bill, I know.
Sure, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session under MGL Chapter 38, Section 218, number three, discuss rights and respect to collective bargaining litigation.
And you're glad it is, yes, we have to, all right, we have to do this by roll call votes, Steve?
Aye.
Patsy, aye. What's your name? David.
Yep.
We are now in the second session. To everyone who watched tonight, thank you, we appreciate it, and have a great evening.